It's six o'clock, so we'll get started with the committee of the whole meeting for the June 2nd Iredale Statesville Schools Board of Education. I want to welcome everyone that's here. We have a lot of things on the agenda today. We moved a few things around. We did that at four. But before I get started off, I just want to thank the county commissioners. Between last time and then, we had a budget retreat they did. And I just want to thank the county commissioners for what they're doing for the school system and working together for not just now, but for in the future with the buildings that we're doing. Thank you. So, yeah, but definitely, I want to thank the county commissioners for that. We'll get started with the personnel report. So, LeVar Mizell, Dr. LeVar Mizell?
Good evening, Chairman Knight, Dr. James, Board of Education. I'm here tonight to discuss our personnel report. If you have any questions that we didn't discuss in closed session that we can discuss in open session, I'm here to answer those.
So, any questions for Dr. Mizell that we can ask in open session concerning the personnel Hearing none, we'll see you next week.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, next we have on the agenda is the produce bid, and Ms. Angel Helms.
Good evening, Dr. James, Chairman Knight. I'm here once again for one last bid that I didn't get to do last time, and it's for the produce bid. It goes through the NCPA, just like the grocery bid and the others do, and it didn't come in until after last month's meeting, so therefore I had to bring it this time. Produce is bid a little differently than some of the others because produce is so, is such a precious commodity, so you have to price it weekly. So, for a bottom line bid, it's priced weekly, and then each distributor had to send in what their pricing was for week of February 24th, so it would be fair across the board. So, when they done that, it came in at really good pricing, but however, after the NCPA did an audit, I had to re-send you guys an updated revision to this budget report or to this bid report, and found that Foster Cavaness had made an error on their bidding for carrots. And the error was that they originally put $43.32 a case, plus $1.85, making their extended price at $27,000. But after the audit, it was found that the price should be $13.50 plus $1.85, which made a huge difference, bringing their bottom line price down to $109,000, making them the low bidder instead of U.S. Food Service. Do you have any questions on that or for me?
Anyone who want to be recognized to discuss the NCPA produce bid with Ms. Angel Helms?
As far as record with the companies, do you have one company over the other that you prefer you always go with the lowest price?
I normally go with the lowest price, as long as I don't have any issues, conflicts with deliveries, things such as that, yeah.
Follow-up question. If you had problems with one of the providers, you would let us know about it, so that could influence our vote?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kupinek?
Yeah, Ms. Helms. Did you happen to look if we overpaid for those carrots last year or for this past school year? Did we overpay there too?
This is actually the first time Iredale Statesville has done a produce bid. In years past, they've only used their entitlement money to pay for produce, and what that is, is the school system gets so much in entitlement funds that they can either put into produce or processing commodities for food. So, Iredale previously put all of their money, they put $190,000 in fresh produce and only bought it that way. I plan to put more fresh fruits and vegetables on the menu next year, so I needed a bid to actually buy produce and still get that produce through Department of Defense, so I'd have enough produce to cover the menu for the whole year. So, this is the first time they've done a produce bid.
Okay, so we never really looked at it this closely before? Or in this detail?
I guess so.
Okay. Where is Foster Cavaness? Where are they located, headquartered?
Greensboro.
Greensboro?
Uh-huh.
So, we don't have anybody in Iredale County?
No. I sent bids out to R&amp;H Produce, Ward's Produce, Foster Cavaness, U.S. Food Service, and even a Keener's Produce, and Foster and U.S. Foods were the only ones to submit bids back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments for Ms. Helms? Trying produce. I'm good with it. You're doing your job. That's what you got to do with it, right?
That's right.
It's good you're having more produce.
You spend over $100,000 on produce, right?
It's crazy, but getting more produce in and hopefully getting the kids to eat it, produce, they'll eat, is a good thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. This will be a voting item next week, so this is a voting item, so board members remember that. So, next on the agenda, it's going to take a little time, so this is from the curriculum department, and Dr. James may be interjecting some stuff in it as well. This is concerning, we've had discussion of low-performing schools, and what we want to talk about, it's about students of poverty and the effect on low-performing schools.
Yes.
So...
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Knight, board members.
Who is yours?
Dr. James. Thank you for the time this evening to discuss this item. So, we have our curriculum department here, and we have some of our principals to share out about, as you said, the students of poverty and the effect on our low-performing schools. Thank you. So, here are the items we're going to discuss this evening. We're going to talk about our data, what our trends are looking like in some of our most at-risk schools, how the students are coming in to those schools. We're going to talk about what actually defines a low-performing school according to the state of North Carolina and the requirements that these schools have to do, because there's been questions in the past about our schools following the guidelines, and you'll see that they are. We're going to talk about the overview of support that our curriculum team provides for these schools, that they are a top priority, and they get pretty much what they need to get from our team. Our principals, we're thankful they're here tonight to share their challenges, because they're the ones in the trenches, they're the ones in there every day, so we think you need to hear from them. And then at the end, we'd like to discuss the support that we would love to have for these schools, that speaking to our principals and teachers, the amazing teachers at these schools, that those of you who've visited those schools see how hard those teachers are working, and the things that they've told us that will help at these schools.
Good evening. I'm Susan Phail. I work in the curriculum department. And this first slide is just beginning the middle of the year. Our students come in, we test them within the first few weeks of school. It's called M-class. So typically, what we see, kids that perform below benchmark are about two years below. And if you look at the slide on my left, you're right. When NB, this is NB, Third Creek, Lake Norman, and Woodland Heights. NB and Third Creek are the blue and red schools. This is how and where the students come in, and this is where they're going toward the middle of the year. And if you look at the difference between the two, at NB, 9% of the kids came in at benchmark, whereas Woodland Heights, Lake Norman, were at 40 and 48 respectively. So, you can see the pretty large gap these teachers face to get them to where they need to be. And then, this one was reading, and then the math is on the right, and you can clearly see the same thing with Third Creek. 1% of the students in kindergarten came in ready to learn at benchmark, and at NB, 6%. And if you look at their counterparts, Lake Norman and Woodland Heights, that's a pretty significant gap for where these students enter and where they are headed in middle of the year. And I just added this slide in. It's one I've shared previously. I wasn't able to get this added in before Mr. Ribic sent it to you, but the next slide, this is the same thing in just a different format. This one includes East, Third Creek, NB, and then Cottle, Woodland Heights, and Lake Norman. This is beginning to end a year in the differential, where their kids came in and where they end. And if you can see, NB is just not, they're finished testing right now. They're with the year-round school, we didn't have that data yet. But if you look at East and Third Creek, where their kids came in and where they, and this is an M-class, so basic reading skills, and where they ended, they're growing their kids, which is phenomenal. And if you look how much they're growing their kids, it's another big leap. But look where their kids are leaving their kindergarten at those schools, and look where the kids are leaving kindergarten at Cottle Creek, Woodland Heights, and Lake Norman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we ask questions on each slide or...
I would prefer we wait on the end, just for the inertia for them to get through the slide and hopefully...
Just briefly, can you, when you explain the slides, like the vertical scale, I don't know what the scale is. I don't know what we're measuring. If you could just do that when we cover it.
Yeah, just...
And if you look at the chart too, the vertical piece, those are like zero through 100 percentages. And so, the one with the red and blue, that was again, the same slide as the previous page with the line chart. This just shows beginning a year, it's the same slide on the next page too, the blue and red, beginning a year to those schools. Those are poverty-stricken schools, our highest-need schools. So, again, you can see, and the things that I've seen, just being in these classrooms and their PLCs, you know, at East, at Third Creek, at NB, where we've spent significant amount of time, these kids come in and some of them are getting toileted, and just learning how to follow a simple direction. Their vocabulary is very limited, you know, and I know the principals will continue to speak like that, but for me, as a coach, you know, like that's what we're zeroed in on. They come in and they leave, and they're still below grade level. How do we close that gap? What are the things we need to do to close that gap and get these kids even comparable to where the lake schools, our kids are headed into first grade?
Yes, so I guess my comments to the board would be, you know, make some notes as you're going along, if you have some questions, then we'll try to address it, because I don't want to, I don't...
I get it.
It helps your flow and helps you present better. You can tell your story.
I need flow. Are you ready, Jim?
So, if we go to the next, my name is Jim Worthington. I work with secondary schools, middle school and high school. So, if we fast forward six years, this is our sixth grade. Again, we took the last two years, '23, '24, and then '24, '25. When we look at our low-performing schools, you can see where they come in. This is the percentage that are proficient in reading. So, you can see, East is about 12, 13%, Third Creek is at 30%, or Troutman Middle is at 30%, and Third Creek is like 11%. This last year, we're proficient. When we compare those to Woodland Heights Middle School, the Brawley School in Oakwood IB, you can see 50, 70, 72, 65% proficient when they come into sixth grade. Go to the next slide. This shows you how much the schools are growing. Our, whoop, it disappeared. Okay. The next slide is going to show you how much our schools are growing our students. So, again, when you look at our low-performing schools, you'll see that not only are the kids coming in low, but they are growing them exponentially. Third Creek, for example, if you look over there, Third Creek, at the beginning of the year, they had right at 10% proficient for I-ready reading. At the end of the year, they were right at 20%. When you compare those to our non-low-performing schools, Woodland Heights, the Brawley School, Oakwood IB, we're getting much better growth out of our low-performing schools, despite the fact that they're limited in staff, in training, they're limited in vacancies, and very high turnover rate. So, even with those limitations, they are still growing our students exponentially, but they're still not able to grow them enough.
Okay, and the next slide basically shows, we asked Laura, our data magician, to pull for us if students who chose to opt out of going to a traditional school, if their numbers were factored back in, what would be the percent increase? And so, when you look at biology at Statesville High School, if the students who chose to go elsewhere came back to Statesville High School, it's a positive 7.6. English, positive 10.8. Math 1, a positive 5.8, and Math 3, a positive 6.1. West Iredale High School is also listed, and if the students came back that were opting to go to Early College or IB, it would be a positive 6% for biology, a positive 9.8 for English 2, a positive 6.6 for Math 1, and a positive 10.4 for Math 3. Then, if you look at the middle schools below, you'll see the same type of trajectory. A couple of them that are very telling, if you look at East Middle, for example, if students came back that were choosing to go elsewhere, it's a positive 18.4. That's a lot of growth that we're missing. The reading is positive 17.9. And then, when you look at Third Creek Middle, Lakeshore Middle, this is the impact of our students who opt to go to the IB schools. Now, I will tell you, in defense of the IB schools, over the past couple of years, you're starting to see a little bit of a shift with the students as we've started the lottery, and it's not really just only those high-performing students going to IB. Now, it is more of a mix of students, and so you're starting to see their trend coming down just a bit. But this is what the impact would be if we had the students who returned back to their home schools.
So, just to give a quick overview about, so people have asked, how does a school become quote-unquote "low performing by the state"? So, as you are aware, each school receives a letter grade from the state based on 80% proficiency and 20% growth, which, if you've seen from the slides, it's not fair to these schools that that is the formula, because you see the students, how they come into those schools, and 80% of that is based on if they're on level, and only 20% is based on the growth. You saw the growth from the middle schools, you saw the growth that our elementary schools are able to do, but only 20% of their letter grade is because of that growth. So, these schools are at a huge disadvantage from this formula from the get-go. The other thing that's a disadvantage is, these schools have to exceed growth each year to not be low performing. Not just meet, which is the expectation, they have to exceed every single year if they want to get out of low performing and stay out. So, they can get out for a year, it's great, you exceeded, but if you don't exceed the next year, you're back to low performing again. So, that's another thing that these schools, a challenge that they have. So, there are required actions that these schools have to do by being labeled low performing. The first is, they have to create an improvement plan, which they do. It's their school improvement plan, and that is if they address both growth and proficiency, and all of our schools do that. And the board does have to approve those plans, and we actually have you approve all of our school improvement plans each year for all of our schools. They do have to notify parents of their status. They have to send a letter home each year that says, "Our school is low performing, here is why, but here are all the things we're doing to try to improve that." And all of their teachers have to have a full observation each year, even the ones that are on the shortened cycle, who have been there a long time and have that status, they still have to have a full observation each year that the principals and assistant principals do conduct with those. So, for our elementary schools, they are a focus for us. Our low-performing schools are a true focus for our team. We are in their schools regularly. We're in their schools, we try to be there once a week if possible, if not more, but we provide regular coaching for the principals and their leadership teams. We coach and model, Dr. Phail and our team. They'll model in the classrooms for the teachers. We will coach the teachers. We will help with them as best I can. When they create their school improvement plans, we help guide and support those. We give, we look at those first. Ms. Cooper and I will look at those first, give feedback, and say, "Here are some things that are good about your plan. Here are some things that we would like you to improve with your plan before they are submitted to you all and as they're done by their entire school improvement team."
So, and then, some of these schools, we have required curriculum we follow, and it's curriculum that's been vetted. We look, we use a lot of websites. We bring teachers in, principals in, to give us feedback to make sure it's viable and it aligns as well as it can be to our North Carolina standards. Letterlands 1, we've had training, we're going to have additional training this year. We give principals and APs and coaches fidelity tools to make sure that they're doing it the way it needs to be. When we do walk-throughs and classroom visits, we give feedback as to what we see, or in some cases, what we don't see. Same thing with magnetic reading, that's our third through fifth grade. It's just a part of our core instruction that all the students get. I've done countless PLCs with magnetic reading and bringing in the science of reading to make sure that we're doing that the way the data and the science tells us to. Bridges Math, that was also an adoption that took place with principal teacher feedback. That's just based, Bridges is more conceptually based rather than the standard algorithms and memorization. A lot of exploring, discussing student discourse. And then, I-Ready is another tool we've used a lot this year, and there's a strong correlation between I-ready performance and EOG performance. That's why we continue to use that. And we've gone in with PLCs. We teach them how to use the reports, create groups, maybe look at core instruction. What are all the kids getting? Maybe we need to not do Letterland and look at something a little bit lower, because over half your kids need more phonics work, those kinds of things.
Okay, next slide, please. So, the support that's provided to the secondary schools, regular coaching for principals and leadership teams, we are in PLCs, we join those, we work with teachers, instructional coaching and modeling for classroom teachers, guidance and support for school improvement plans, and then we have targeted programs. You want to talk to a couple of those?
Sure. So, we have EdMint and Edgenuity, which are, provide supplemental content, both for below grade level, but also those on grade level and above. We use those for unit recovery, as well as credit recovery at the high school level. Lexia PowerUp is our reading comprehension. A lot of schools are using that as a Tier 3 intervention. We have IXL for math and ELA support, very similar to I-Ready. And then, we have ExactPath, and this again, allows high schools to use individualized learning paths in ELA and math.
And all of our middle schools who were considered low performing, this year, we had our social studies and ELA teachers took the Lexia Aspire training. Some of them are still in the middle of that, so it's like 48 hours graduate hours worth of training. And we've taken the training, we've got our teachers in it, we have some who've completed it, about 20 some have already completed the training, but this teaches our teachers how to teach a secondary student how to read, and it's all based on the science of reading, just like the letters training for elementary. So, we've done that with IXL. We moved to IXL from I-Ready. Previously, we had seen some very good growth with I-Ready. However, when middle, or when elementary came onboard and started using I-Ready, by the time the kids got to us in sixth grade, they kind of had what we call I-Ready fatigue, and they were sick of I-Ready. And they were like, "Oh, my gosh, we have to do I-Ready." So, we were trying to find another evidence-based platform that is a little more grown up for middle school to get them engaged, and so IXL is the path that we've taken at this point. Anything you want to add?
I just think the big thing is, you know, working and being in the buildings and working with our principals, our leadership teams, so we give them that guidance and support through their school improvement planning and different pieces, that really support them from the core outward with what they do along with the programming that we just talked about.
So, we do have a couple of our elementary principals here this evening. We have Mr. Mihal from Cloverly Fellowship Elementary and Mrs. Ribic from East Elementary, and they're, I'd like for them to share some of the, about their school and some of the challenges they face.
Go ahead.
Thank you for having us tonight, Dr. Knight, members of the board, Dr. James. We are, you know, a lot of our pathway for all of the things we work on is growth, of course, but if you look at the growth over the past few years, you look at our trajectory for our school, we've met growth. We haven't exceeded yet, but that doesn't stop us. So, we do, like, give you a full picture. There's two different things going on here. We're talking about poverty, we're talking about growth, and we're talking about test scores. So, you know, on the poverty side, it's an everyday thing, like you see it, whether it's McKinney-Vento students that are getting enrolled, and then what do you do to, you know, meet them where they're at? So, we do offer programs that meet them where they're at, which is our MTSS program, which is multi-tier system of support. And what that is, is you look at phonics and you push in or pull out. It's a push-in system where you go to the, into the classroom. We have retired teachers, we've hired 19-point five hours or less. If you know math on that, that is a very, very good bang for your buck to get people in the building, in your classrooms, that have a lot of experience, trained in Orton-Gillingham, and they push into a classroom and they give phonics instruction. We also pull them out for Tier 2 and 3. This is one of these programs, this is a program we offer because we feel that it's necessary to, you know, students are coming into us at a lower level, we meet them where they're at. And so, that's a program that we offer at more of our, in the poverty schools or the Title I schools, or the schools in the city. We offer programs just like that to give them, you know, meet them where they're at. But also, we offer, as an IB school, and thank you for allowing us to, you know, the support we get from the board for International Baccalaureate Program is quite large, and I never really get a chance to say thank you, but I really appreciate it, because you're really doing a thing for poverty in that. The thing for poverty with that piece is you're bringing worldview to a school. Worldview to a school is really a big piece of, to combat poverty, is to give students a bigger perspective of what they have in their lives, in their, in their small world of, that they live in currently. So, I feel that that is a, you know, a huge impact for us as well on the poverty side, but we are, as a school, this is probably our best year to date for data, for proficiency. And the growth has got to come with it eventually. As you know, growth is a formula. We really don't know how it's created. We can't really figure that out, but we can tell you, if we show proficiency growth, we should see some growth come along with students in their projections. So, we've had a lot of success, but the challenges are big. I try not to dwell on challenges, because I like to look at solutions, as we all do in the principalship. We look at solutions, because we can't sit there and mope about it, we got to fix it, and that's what we're charged to do. And we do that at a high level as a core group in the city, between MB Mills, Third Creek, East, and myself. We do work hard to make that happen, and we work together to make that happen as well. But when you have students coming in that do not have food, we offer food systems. You don't offer clothing, they don't have clothes, we offer clothes. So, it's way deeper, and we don't publicize it, because it is not something that we want to dwell on, we want to look at solutions in the future. And the programs we put in place, like MTSS, the IB program, dual immersion, do those things, and Leader and Me as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jen, and she'll share that as well.
Good evening, Chairman. Dr. James, board, thank you for letting us speak today. As Mr. Mihal said, you know, we do have our challenges in a Title I school, in a low-performing school, but we choose not to dwell on those challenges. We have, I know, I can personally speak at my school, we have an amazing school, we have amazing staff, we have amazing students. We believe in meeting our students exactly where they are. where they are. Um, it's a, it's a growth mindset. It's a shift. Um, this is my third year there and it's taken us, me, three years to really get the staff to where we have that growth mindset and that positive to, to, if the child is here, that's where we're meeting them and we're going to grow them to here. Um, one of, I would say, like we said, we don't dwell on the challenges, but one of the biggest challenges that I've seen over the last three years being there is staffing. It's no, it's no, um, uh, secret that we have a shortage of teachers across the nation. Um, one of our biggest challenges at our school, I know, is how do we compete with getting quality, high-quality certified teachers to come to our school when they can go somewhere that might be easier, that doesn't have the challenges, that doesn't have poverty, that doesn't have kids coming in three years behind, um, that has their basic needs met, that has parent involvement, that doesn't have to deal with the challenges of the emotions, the social emotional challenges that our students face every day. Basic needs, like Mr. Mihal was saying. Um, it's hard for me to convince a, a veteran teacher that's taught for 10 years to want to come to a challenging school like that when they can go elsewhere and it's not challenging and they have parent involvement and, and all of that. So, um, and then that's another letter that we have to send home, as Mr. Ribic was saying. We have to send a letter home if their child's, uh, teacher is not certified. So that poses another challenge when you get, when you get a letter coming home saying that, "Oh, my child's teacher's not a certified teacher," which then makes that parent want to go to a, a school where they can have a certified teacher for their child. And then it's just that cycle of wanting to go to a better school. So it's some staffing, um, like I said, I've worked really hard the last three years to get good, solid staffing in place. Um, so that's one of our challenges as well. But like Mr. Mihal was saying, it's just the basic needs that we have to meet every day. We, we care about our kids. Um, we make decisions based on what's best for kids. We also have some great programs at our school that allows our students, um, to have opportunities like the dual immersion program and the diversity. The Leader and Me is huge at our school because we coach our teachers to, to practice the seven habits just like we ask our students to, um, to seek first to understand, to be proactive, to understand where that child is coming from, um, and meet them where they are to meet their needs. So, thank you.
And for secondary schools, we've, have with us Sarah Pasley from Third Creek Middle, Dr. Chad Parker, and Ben Johnson. Um, Dr. Parker is Statesville High and Ben Johnson from West Iroh High School. So Sarah, you want to start?
Sure. Good evening, Board. Um, I can second exactly what, uh, Mr. Mihal and Ms. Ribic said about, um, their schools and the needs that they have. Um, a lot of similar challenges and a lot of similar needs, um, for staffing in our building. Um, so I won't go through all of it with you again because it's very similar and it was very well said.
Good evening, Ben Johnson, West Iroh High School. Uh, first just want to say that, uh, in these situations and in challenges that we're, we're going to discuss and we have discussed, there's one thing that, that hasn't been said yet. And one of the things is when the students and the parents trust you, then they will start to perform. For example, there's a, a scientist, uh, John Hattie, and I study him. And one, he did a study on 300 million students. It was like a 30-year study. And he came up with this almost like a, like a Richter scale of impact on students. Some of it's home, some of it's classroom, you know, school-based. And one of the things, one of the largest things is when you feel, when students feel like they're liked by their teachers, then that is a huge impact. So you start there. And Dr. Parker pointed out something earlier that, you know, you looked at those numbers when it talked about, um, you know, plus 10, plus six, you know, when it's talking about the, you know, EOC scores and things of that nature. You also have to understand, not only are those students' test scores, they bring a different culture to your building as well. These are the students that are going to excel. They're going to do things in the community and shed light on your school. So it's not just the plus 10. It's everything that, you know, it comes with it. So, um, but I just want to say that, you know, some of the challenges we have, you know, if, if, if you've heard the story about us in the math department, you know, math department's been revolving door for a couple of years, ever since I've been in the building as the principal. Um, but I will say the, the ones that were there, you know, it was like they were there for, you know, a, a season and a reason in the season. And so now we're getting to the point where we have a little bit of stability. If you think of, if you look at our, um, if our English department, they're young, they're energetic, and they're there for the long haul. So, you know, we had a 25% jump in, in English to EOC scores in a year. So, you know, and everybody's like, "How does that happen?" Well, the students love that English department. The students, uh, they, they love and want to come to school. They're attending school on a higher rate. So those things attribute to the growth process. We just had, and, and another part is too, when you look at, uh, young teachers, we always talk about having, you know, certified teachers in the building. And that's, that's wonderful. However, these young teachers come in and we have to teach them the, like the nuts and bolts of how to move children. They have a lot of philosophical things, which is not bad. They have a lot of philosophy behind what they want to do. They want to change the world. However, we have them to look at the data and it's more prescriptive in what you have coming in your room every single day. So those are some of the challenges as well. You can't teach that in a year. That is something that I'm 23 years in and I'm still looking and learning about data and what to do with it and how to prescribe and how to adjust that to, uh, to make students perform. You know, so that's some of the challenges as well. You get it just because you get a teacher in one year, that doesn't mean, you know, it's a magic wand and everything is good. We still have to go in. We still have to teach. And we're still having students coming in the building with their issues. So we have to, as an administrator, we have to fix those students, give them the best we can possibly be. Psychological, you know, all the confidential, all the confidence in the world that they can conquer the world, then we send them back to class. We also, I know the downside of, you know, you look at suspensions, you look at absenteeism, things of those and things of that nature. It's hard for an administrator to try to minimalize that because you do have the safety aspect, but you also want the students in school. So I think in the, and I'll, I'll brag about this, in the last three months, I think we were the highest attendance rate in the last three months in, in, amongst all the high schools. Now, that comes with two different things. You have the students that really don't want to be in school, but you have them interested enough to come in. So you have to, you know, mitigate that and referee that sometimes. And, uh, you have to merge that and the academic performance of the students that just don't have the skill. And we have to put them together and fix them. So it's, it's, it's almost like a juggling act because between the parents, community, you have social media, you have people that, you know, try to take digs and, and look at different things and talk about what you're not doing in the schools. You have to balance all those things. And at the end of the day, you have to protect your teachers as well. So, because guess what? Efficacy is a large part of it too. So there's a lot of things that if you're, if you're not attached to the school, if you don't walk through the school, um, or not an administrator, not a teacher, that you will never hear about. So that's why I always tell, um, I always tell my students, I always compare, you know, where they're, where they're at now to where we need them to be. And we also put a plan together on how to get there. And you have to be real forthcoming with that information. You have to have, you have to build a relationship where you can have tough conversations with parents, tough conversations and, and let the parents know, it's where the trust comes in, that we're the, we're the professionals and we're going to make the best decision for your child. Now, that itself is a, is a, is a, I guess that's a magical or a superpower that you need to have in this, you know, in any level. So, you know, like I said, so I know we talk about numbers, but we also need to talk about the entire school community. So, and, and what that brings and some of the challenges and that, that nobody would ever see. You only, you can only live it. So, um, and we, I'll let Dr. Parker come up because I think I've said enough and I'm going to let-
You've taken all the oxygen out of me.
No, but, uh, but that's the cultural piece behind it. So Dr. Parker, he's going to come up and, uh, close this, close this out.
We have one more minute, Dr. Parker. I'm joking. I'm joking.
I mean, as much as I like to talk, I mean, dang on. So Dr. Knight, Dr. James, Board, Dean, nobody said hi yet. So Mr. Shadley, always a pleasure. Um, you know, I think everybody has done a great job in trying to explain a little bit of what our day looks like. I would say that, you know, a 30-minute pop-in visit, you know, a selfie with some students is not a, a true window into what any of us deal with each and every day. Um, you know, it's taken five years at Statesville High School. Uh, and sometimes it feels like it's been a lot more than five. The, what we have to do in order to move it forward, like for us, I mean, since we're throwing out data points, uh, we had a 10-point jump, over a 10-point jump in overall proficiency. Graduation rate up 10 points, work keys up 10 points, uh, almost across the board. But, you know, we're looking at data, yeah, you know, we, we had 12% projected proficient. We're at almost 40%. So we're three times projection, but we're still only at 40%. And I also want, you know, I think somebody brought it up. I think Ms. Ribic did. You can make the same amount teaching at East Iroh as you can at Woodland Heights. Well, go back a few slides and look at what the data was for a school like West Iroh or South, or Statesville High, or any of the other elementaries or middles. That took money out of our pocket. Not that we're, any of us are in it for the money, but the amount of hours that we're poring over data, meeting with families, you know, for me, you know, just trying to figure out what's going on in the community and how it's going to affect the next day's operation. I think all of those things are lost. You know, I wasn't always Dr. Parker. I spent some time while at Statesville High School completing that. You know, on average during my dissertation data mining, thanks Lord Elliot, um, that, you know, Statesville High School on average lost 350 students every year. Where'd they go? They, they, well, they went into one of the three early colleges or before Statesville was an IB program. So that, that impacted my ADM. Now again, put those scores back in the building, plus the difference in culture. We're all struggling to have parent organizations, booster clubs. Well, those are the ones that are there and doing, doing some of the work with us. Uh, you know, the other thing is, is, you know, I'm not complaining about the, uh, kind of the, the grading system. I mean, you can see where our data is. I've spent a lot of time looking at my feeder patterns, where my demographics are in my feeder patterns. How are they growing over time? How do we perform in comparison to my, you know, feeder pattern? If anybody would like to see any of that work, that's another time. But it is, it's hard work. And then your, you know, game nights, all the other good stuff that goes with it. So I would say that probably one of the hardest parts about being in a low performing school is just sometimes the fact you feel like you're on an island. And, you know, there is social media. There's all things said or done or what have you. But when you have to take a kid that's projected in the 12th percentile and raise them to the 50th percentile, and you see that child do it and the teacher that got them to do it, and then you still got to turn around and defend what's going on in your building, it makes it very difficult for all of us to continue to do our job. And, and the last thing is, I know Kelly wanted me to talk about EVOs. And the EVOs is like the big mystery. Um, you know, who knows what it is? You know, you get data. It's like comparing apples to soccer balls sometimes. Uh, it really doesn't match up, you know, for us. And I think Kelly could attest, you know, this year, across the board, based on what we can see, we're five to 10 points above what's projected, but who knows what it, what's going to happen when it goes into the EVOs engine. They re-norm it and decide who's, who's passing, who's failing. If they're going to put it on a normal curve, some are going to exceed, some are not. So how do we compare to some cohort out in, you know, magic EVOs land? Who knows? But right now, I guarantee you, if you would sit and take the time to, you know, sit down and see our data breakdown for all of us, we're way ahead of where the state said we should be until they take it and compare us. And then we're going to have to go and try and figure out again how to figure out the system. So we're no longer considered not met when our kids are meeting what we're asking to do every day.
So Mr. Parker, to your point, Andy said earlier, Mr. Mihal, sorry, said earlier that you got to exceed growth to stay out of low performing if you're a D or an F. But the, you're, you're shooting at a moving target, a rabbit in most cases. So the target next year is not the target you hit this year, correct?
That's correct. And the other thing I would say is I like our chances. Um, like I said, I mean, I think Kelly knows, or, and everybody just about in the room, on the principal side, knows that I'm kind of a data nerd. Uh, I taught math for a long time before I ever did, thought about doing this. You know, if we look at our goal summaries, how we do on the majority pieces of the test, kind of how the EOCs are broken down, like we've closed or exceeded the gap based on the, the last tested mean. So in English two, while we didn't score as well as Mr. Johnson, I would like him to take a look at his math numbers. Yeah. Well, you had, you had to throw English in. It's still a sore spot, but we're working hard. You know, English two, math three, math one, we have by double digits closed our distance from the mean by over half, which is putting us closer to met growth in all of those. You know, for us, I mean, Dr. James, it takes, it takes us three years to grow a student mathematically. If you look at our math one versus our math three, it takes us till their 11th grade year to get them in a position to do well academically in math. If they would move the English test to the 11th grade, we would be in the same boat. We'll have to see how biology turns out. Nobody knows what August will bring. So.
But your key is you're growing students. So they're not dropping out. They're not being unemployed. So they're ending up, they might start out behind the eight ball, but all the work we're doing, even without sometimes parent support or PTOs, you, you really, your staff's filling in the gap for all that. And that makes it even harder and easier to burn out, but harder on you as an individual. But the thing with EVOs two, it's not a true growth formula. You just said it in all your dissertation, all your data crunching. Growth should be based on where Chad starts and where Chad ends, not you throw it into the mix with 115 school districts and then you put it in a standard deviation model to make sure that 35% of those in that model fail. Every year, 35% will fail. That is not a true model of the impact of teachers. It's a model to dismantle our public education system, which is, is pretty well where we're heading. Um, if we don't change the model. Everyone else, even Florida, who started the model years ago, has seven points that they look at and they give you points for it. And, and by all means, where you start out in life after your birth doesn't impact where you, it doesn't take as much of an impact in the scoring process as North Carolina. So if you're, if you're, I guess blessed enough to be born into an affluent family in North Carolina, you're going to get into a school ahead of your peers and you're going to get typically in schools of choice, and you're going to get more scholarships. You're going to deal with less of discipline in the building. So you're being rewarded for where you started in life. Whereas our public education system, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Parker, was designed to level the playing field for every person in this country, but it's not in the state.
I believe that was the, you know, kind of the onus behind Horseman's work. Um, the one thing I would say is there is a tremendous amount of support. So, you know, I guarantee you, you don't hear this from me a whole lot, but thank you. I mean, from our barbering program, our CNA classes, everything that's offered here at CATS that's supported to keep those carrots in front of students, to keep them in school so they can be productive once they walk across the stage. And I think if you would look at Mr. Johnson as well as my data, we walked more kids across the stage this year than we have in the past two or three years. Uh, so yes, Dr. James, we are making a difference. And there's plenty of opportunities within the district. Um, you know, I know Mr. Scott's in the back. He's been very active at our middle and high schools. Uh, with his work, I know that with his wife's work, trying to get some parent, you know, involvement in the citywide schools. So there is a lot of good that's going on. But I also think sometimes where the struggle is, sometimes a helpful, you know, a helping hand or a kind word goes a lot further than a sharp tongue and a quick opinion. So if y'all have got questions for anybody else other than me, I'm going to surrender the mic.
Before I go on, I, okay, are, are, I'm, I'm so sorry.
You're fine. So we've asked our low performing principals, teachers, what are some things that would help your school? And for elementary especially, this is my soapbox right here, is universal pre-K. If we had universal pre-K, I guarantee you, we wouldn't be in the predicament we are in some of our schools. The state of North Carolina spent millions, Dr. James mentioned it this morning and during our admin team, millions upon millions of dollars for the Read to Achieve mandate. That mandate ma, means that third graders who aren't on level, they get a summer school and they're, they have extra testing they need to do. And you know how much impact that's had over the last 10 years? Zero. There's been no impact from Read to Achieve. None whatsoever. There's been no impact from read to achieve, none whatsoever, zero. But if they had put those, those millions upon millions of dollars each year into pre-K, I guarantee you it would make a better impact to be on the front end rather than, to be proactive rather than reactive. So I, we feel that in our schools, if we had more pre-K classrooms, I'm on the executive board for the Partnership for Young Children, and that is what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to get the expansion of pre-K.
Well, we've tracked the data for years on our kids who went to pre-K all the way up through fifth grade. Your kids who went to a pre-K program are going to outscore your kids who did not.
As it was mentioned before, highly qualified staff in all classrooms, that alone right there also would make a huge difference in our schools. And then if you can't have that consistent support for teachers who aren't highly qualified. So if you have teachers that aren't, what support can we give beyond? We're trying our best to give support. There's just four of us in my area, and you only have a couple in yours, three in your area, so trying to give all that support, it's, it's very difficult to do. We do our best with it.
And sometimes where, you've heard me tell it before, but there are times where we're actually teaching the teachers how to do the math before they go teach the kids how to do the math. So we need, we have to have folks who can come in and help tutor or help be an interventionist in the classroom, which are the things that we have listed, because when you have a classroom full of 30 kids, and you have them from the student who is a rocket scientist to the kid who is really struggling and still can't add, subtract, multiply and divide, and we're in high school, middle school and high school, being able to pull them in small groups and work with them is integral to our support. And the places where we've had tutors, where we've had interventionists, you start to see that improve. But right now, we have one instructional coach basically in every building. We need more.
So before we end here too, Dr. James, another thing that's for support is the task force that Dr. James is forming. I think that, that also will have an impact on our schools to bring in, we've been asking members of the community to come in and anyone who wants to help with our schools to come in and what can you do to help out in the community? What can we do to help the support for these schools? And I, and I really wanted the principals to be here tonight too, because I hope you see that the dedication that they have to their schools and being in the schools, I know a lot of you, seeing you in the schools, see that. You see the dedication of the teachers, you see the dedication of the principals. That is not at all, it's not a lack of any of that. They're working their tails off, our principals are, our teachers are, TAs, bus drivers, they all are. We just need a little more, and we're doing the best we can to provide that.
I echo that. I feel like these people are superstars that are working in these buildings. When you're in the classroom and you watch those kids who never found success, find success, that's what life, that's what it's about. And these guys get up every single day, they come in and they are ready and running early in the morning. My phone starts ringing from some of them at seven o'clock in the morning, sometimes 6:30, to tell me what's happening for the day and what the plans are and what needs, what they're getting ready to do for their day. So it's super important to let them help us know what they need, because it's really easy to be an outside problem spotter, and they've got lots of problem spotters. They've got a lot of people that can tell them everything that's wrong and spot all the problems. But they're in the buildings, they're working with the kids, they know what they need, and really just being able to help meet those needs.
We appreciate you listening and, oh, we appreciate you listening, and we'll do our best to answer questions, and the team as well can help us with those if, if need be.
Okay, but before we go on, I just, I just want to thank you all personally. It's been a, it's a long year every year. I teach, you know, at university, and I've taught high school six years, but it's a long year and, but it feels good when you say, I know the data comes in from what I've heard, it's looking pretty good so far. Mr. Johnson, you know how, how, I like Statesville, but I'm out in west, so, sorry. My kids went to west.
She had a great time at graduation.
I forgot your duck.
But just seeing growth, and growth is why we teach, and that's why I teach, that's why I still teach, seeing kids come into a classroom and what they don't know, and then when they get, when they get out what they do know. And I really just want to comment on one thing, I think Mr. Johnson, I think you said it also, Dr. Parker, is if the kids think they're liked and loved.
Hundred percent.
It, it, it changes the landscape of, of the teaching that you're doing.
Yeah, and I'll share that, like Ms. Ribic told me in the last day of school, she had kids crying their eyes out because they didn't want to go home on the last day of school.
I was one of those.
And that says it all. I mean, just, but, and teachers just being upset, and kids just crying because they just, they're going to be sad because they're going to miss being with their teachers and being at school.
And it makes a huge, that just makes a huge, I just want to thank you guys for everything you do. It's, it's a lot of work. I always say you need time to charge, recharge your batteries in the summer. So y'all, please take it, at least some of you are on 11, 12, 12 months. Take a little bit of recharge time. I do want to open it up for questions. I'll have a few of mine and comments, and I'll come back to that after everyone. So anyone want to start?
I will, as usual.
Okay.
I have a long time getting my words just right, so just bear with me. Y'all give us a review, and I want to give you some insight and review in our board. We're sometimes viewed as enemy, and we're not. We want the best thing that we could have for our kids. What I heard tonight is we got limited staff, teachers, and turnover. That's our fault. But what are we doing to fix it? I ain't never begged for money in my life, and I'm begging for money. We've repaired relationships with our county commissioners. We're getting more money. If it's not one of us up here, if we couldn't fix the problem, then we wouldn't. We bring attention to it a lot, and I don't think it's to point fingers at nobody, I think it's to ask, how can we help? And most of the time, it's money. We're limited on it.
Well, Mr. Sloan, I hope that Dr. James' task force can help with, I really hope, I hope that that's going to help with that. Maybe some more resources can come from there.
The highlights of my year this year, I went to several different schools and a lot of performances. I had a boy that I helped coach football cut my hair. And I went to N.B. Mills for the greatest.
Yep.
Performance I seen.
And that gets, I'm just going to tell you, that gets noticed too, when you all are at events and visiting the schools, we hear it. We hear it from our principals and teachers, and just they appreciate it.
And I feel like sometimes it, y'all as principals, you hold back a little bit. You need to put your gloves on and tell the ones above you what you need and how you If you don't feel like you're able to do that, bypass them. Send me an email. I can't promise to give you, but I can promise I'll try. Thank you.
Anyone else initially? Kevin?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you all. My pleasure, which is working with some of you all personally and professionally. I've got daughters at East, and they love it there and have done so well. And, you know, you guys know, most of you, I work with children in foster care, and we have successfully graduated every one of our eligible foster youth from our program from Statesville High School. We've done that several years now in a row, and I'm very proud of that outcome as well. I can connect to many of the insights that were shared as it relates to the worldview, understanding the importance of culture, you know, within your school. And I think you need to continue to lean into those insights, because I think it's bigger than just obviously the data that we're tracking, right? It, it's, it's more than that. And we all have a sense of responsibility of how to solve the problem, and that, that's what I'm really curious about, like how do we address lead and lag measures in statistically significant ways and put solutions together that are different for what that's worth? Also feel a deep sense of responsibility as we approach redistricting. And I think that's something where I would say that's where we're all going to work together, because there's going to be some decisions, and this is my one man's opinion, that might not be popular, but can help some of these problems. And I'm okay if that's not shared, but I'm going to advocate for some of that. I think we've got to look at how we put everybody together. My daughters are stronger because of the, they have the privilege of growing up in a family with two loving parents and grandparents, and had a third grade retired teacher help my daughter get on par with her reading, you know, over the past year. Well, not every child has that. And so we've got to put Ruby next to the child that doesn't have that and learn how to be her friend and be her mentor and be a part of the culture and increase her tolerance for behaviors at times and understand the function of behavior. And I could get on and on the soapbox, so. But thank you again, and I recognize the work you are seeing. It does not go unnoticed. And as Mr. Sloan said, continue to push up, practically speaking, what we can do, you know, as a board to help you solve these problems.
Thank you. Mr. Kubik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming today, and I, I can see the optimism from all of you speaking today, so I'm, I'm really, I'm really hopeful that when all the numbers roll up in a few months, we're really going to see a nice step jump. I'm really, really hopeful for that. And I can tell you though, I would not want any of your jobs. I couldn't do your jobs, and I wouldn't want it. But I thank you, we have people like you that are doing these jobs. The, the thing is, you're here today to speak about the challenges with low performing schools. And, you know, I've been very vocal about this issue. The number one reason is to bring attention to it, because if we don't have attention to it, we're really not going to focus all our energies and resources to fixing it, and that's the main goal here. However, if one-third of the school district is not performing and achieving like we want them to, then that's, that's a district problem. That's not just your problem, that's a district-wide problem. And I think, and I would ask you to think about, maybe there are district-wide solutions that we could think about that involve inputs and ideas from other schools that are doing much better, and it's not just you are the ones trying to figure it out, because it's a district, it's a district issue. And so we all have to pull our heads together to solve the problem. And, and Mr. Ribic, you talked about on your one slide, and I've had a disagreement with Mr. Ja- Dr. James on, on this one issue where we need qualified teachers in the classroom. And the issue is, we have compare, if you're using the data that's available, and they call it poverty schools, high and low, right? We have less experienced teachers in our high poverty schools, and we have less experienced principals in our high poverty schools. So, and I'm, I know that's an HR issue, but if we want to turn around schools, maybe we ought to be putting the absolute most experienced teachers and principals in these challenging schools. And, and that's what I, I offer us to think about, the status quo. The status quo may not always serve us the best when we're not achieving the results that we need. And I'll, I'll leave you with a couple of final thoughts is, Mr. Johnson, you brought up, I think you mentioned a, a comment about attendance, your student attendance. And so of all the number crunching and review of the data that I've done over the last several months, the, the one key metric that jumps out to me is of the 13 low performing schools at the end of last school year, 11 of them had 20% or more chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism is defined as someone who's missed one day of school in a 10-day period, or essentially 10%. So if you're, if a school is 30 and 40% chronic absenteeism, those kids can't learn if they're not there. So of all these things, when we've got high poverty schools, low poverty schools, experienced teachers, non-experienced teachers, Title I versus non-Title I, chronic absenteeism, from what I can tell, that's just my review, is, is something that we have to solve, because we are, we're still way above pre-pandemic levels, not just, not just Idarodale-Statesville School, but the state and so many other school districts. And I think that's something that we have to really look at, and I, and I hope, hope you can figure it out, because I know I probably can't, but I think that's one of the keys, is chronic absenteeism, which is different than just a total attendance number. It's showing you those, those repeat offenders, if you will, that we've got to figure out how to get kids in school and want to keep them there and to keep them learning and get them motivated. And I think that's the key to turning things around, just from my review. Thank you.
Chairman. Well, I want to respond to part of Mike's, and they can jump into.
Okay, go ahead.
Fully agree with Mike. But here's the problem, just like people don't want to attend a city school, and they use choice to get out of the city schools, teachers are going to self-select where they want to teach. We can move them tomorrow, and we'll have about 150 positions open the next day.
Well, maybe we're, we're underestimating.
Let me answer your question. And so the problem does not reside with us or these people. The problem is at our state level. We pay the same amount of money for a teacher, whether I send you to an affluent school or a poverty school, but yet our talking heads in Raleigh will say, we should put our best teachers at our hardest schools. Well, what are they doing to encourage that? Nothing. What are they, these principals, so they're not going to exceed growth, so they're not going to get paid the most. Our principal pay system is also designed, if you're in an affluent school and you hit growth, which you should, if you're in an affluent school and don't hit growth, you're, you're having a conversation with the team and myself, because you should be able to. So that data, we know, so that's a different evaluation. So if you're in an affluent school, you can make up to 17,000 or 18,000 more dollars. So once again, we talk out of both sides at the state. We know what it takes to fix the problem, but we do everything opposite of what it takes. We're going to cater to the population that can vote for us and spend their money on us, and that's the affluent people. Poor people aren't going to go out and vote. Very, I just struggle every time we have a vote. These guys are sitting back here, and so you have to go bust them in. So we continue to pay a group of people to make sure that our system is penalized for not being affluent. And so these guys see that, they struggle with it, and every time we get close, they change the game, just like EVOs. True growth of any educator, all the education in this room, is simple. It's where you start and where you end. But we don't want to do that, and there's four systems in our state, we'll be talking about that Wednesday, Dr. Knight. There's four, there's four education systems in our state, and the only one that's held to a standard of a black sock room that gets in and devises a test that nobody knows is only public education students, but there's thousands of other students that get our tax dollars. It's okay for them to take a, I owe a basic skills test, if that's okay for them, should be okay for us. And so everything we have done for the last, since 2013 at our state, is to disenfranchise public education to the point that nobody wants to go. So if I hand you a voucher, you can go to Davison Day or the other school that we have here, I hear we have another private school. So if that's our intent, we're doing a really good job at it. I would give the, if that's really what we want for a state, we give ourselves an A+ because we're right on that track to do it. But there's a million and a half students that need our help, that aren't, some of them are affluent, some aren't, but they all benefit from us. The guys I had the other day on the radio from La Crosse, it was amazing to listen to those kids without any hypocrisy. Were excited about attending Lake Norman, one was going to Harvard, they were going to Tampa Bay, and it was just amazing. But you have that rinse and repeat in every one of these schools. But these guys just want a fair playing field, and it, it's almost like you're putting in a middle school baseball player with a high school team and saying, if you don't do as good, shame on you. It's not going to happen. We've been dealt a bad card. That's where boards, so we didn't have a problem as a board deciding not to follow calendar law. I think 115 boards need to tell the state, we're not going to follow this model anymore. And let them try to disenfranchise us. I'm pretty sure that won't work, because there's a million and a half students and 3 million parents, that'll change that really quick. But there, there's got to be a cry from the peanut gallery out in the communities to rise up and say, enough's enough. We can't keep disenfranchising us. Everything's money. We can do a lot of things if we had the budget. And so we want every child's gap to be closed. We want every child to be successful. But yes, so I would agree with you there 110%, but I'm telling you, you get burnt out in these schools, and these guys will tell you, because you start taking on those students, because they may not have a parent, or that parent may work three jobs. When you show up at a ballgame, when Ben was talking, it's not about just talking to that kid. If you show up at their ballgame or come to a recital, those kids see you there, they know you care. And you won't believe what the kids say, oh my gosh, y'all showed up at this event or that. You know, my problem is, they all booked me up, and I'm like, I can't make every like, "I can't make everything." And I try to tell the kids ahead of time. So absolutely. But the task force, yes, I've asked you and Ms. Hayes to be on, Hanes to be on, and quite a few community people that have, that are in political positions that can help decide, "Do we want to put money in pre-K and try it at MB meals and make sure every kid gets pre-K and then follow the data for three years? And if it works, then we need to figure out how to replicate it without treating all schools the same." I mean, if, if we can't get the money, we're going to find a way to tighten our belt and produce it somewhere within our own system. Thank you.
Before you respond, I want to give the administrators.
I want to take Mr. Sloan's advice and then address Mr. Cooper, kind of your thing on attendance. So my charge would be to the board is to enter into some conversations with our Chamber of Commerce. I don't know how many are at West Iredale, but I can probably count on every finger and toe that, you know, in my office, how many of our students have to go to work to help support their families? So if you're making them, so we're asking children to make a decision, "Do I support my mom, dad, or whoever at home, or do I go to school and not have food lights and shelter?" Well, Chamber of Commerce has some effect on, or possibly can have some effect on when students are allowed to work within the school hours. So, not to say that we don't work hard to get all of our students to school, but it's a real problem when they're making a decision by going to work at 10:00 and not coming to school, so they can help their parents pay their rent. Yes, I mean, you've got, you've got a fairly new facility right down the street from here that's paying more than a starting teacher is, that is taking 18-year-old seniors, and they really don't care if they graduate, because they're making real money. That would be my charge, is if, yes, we're working hard, we meet, we're going on home visits. I mean, Ms. Savage with her social, has helped a ton with her social workers. But when I have to compete, or Mr. Johnson or any other high school principal has to compete with food on the table versus graduating, I can tell you which one's going to win. And that is the one thing that has come post-COVID, that we did not have to fight as much prior. So, thanks, I'll take your advice.
Any other comments, administration-wise? Go ahead.
Dr. Knight, as they're coming up, I would say this, we are required by state law to prosecute for treachery. We stay in court weekly. But in that process, it doesn't say how that's going to be determined by the judge. As a middle school principal, I went to court seven, matter of fact, when I went to court, the, the kid was 11th grader in high school and still had not been prosecuted, but was chronically absent from sixth grade on. Took him, so, and again, going back to Brian, so we have to hire a social worker to take him to court. It is a very detailed process. These guys will tell you that they spend hundreds of hours trying to take kids to court, because their parents choose not to make them go to school. There is a compulsory attendance law, but evidently, some parents don't care about that. Then, you know, it's just, it's almost like everything that could be against you is against our at-risk schools. It's nothing in our favor, and it's like nobody's stepping up, stepping up to actually help us. Fully agree. You got to be at school.
Go ahead. I think, Ms. Cooper, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, I saw you. Any minute. Okay, go ahead.
I was looking at your slide of the, what support is needed for our low-performing schools. I just wanted to just reiterate that since the beginning I've been on here, I've been an advocate for, for pre-K.
Yep.
That was number one revelation of the moment I was on the board. Any resolution about teacher pay incentives, you know, I vote and advocate for. Trade programs, you know, here at CATS, I would love for every school to have trade programs. Advocate of the barber shop, attended there, the IB program, anything that can get the kids to stay at school. Math is not going to get it unless you're, you know, maybe going engineering or something, but, but being in activities, it will keep them in school. So I'm, I'm proponent of extracurricular activities and the funding for that. Tutoring, absolutely. Understand that's the only way we're going to get the low-performing kids to be at the level of everyone else, as if they do something above and beyond what they're already doing in the day. So advocate for tutoring, however we can get the funding. Teacher training, we've discussed at depth, both of y'all, about getting teachers trained into additional, for additional tools to use in the classroom. So I believe that I've already been a proponent for what you claim is needed, and I'll continue to be an advocate for those things that you request. And I appreciate all what you do, and also the patience as we learn about, you know, some of these complex things that even, as, as one said, you don't even understand it, right? So if, if you don't even understand it, and then we're here, and, and we don't understand it at an even deeper level, I appreciate the patience that you give us as we learn and grow and discover what we can do and what we can't do. So I appreciate all your hard work, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Knight, I want to roll in on the tail end of this.
Okay.
So, of course, I will tell you that, just received a note, every student that has 10-plus absences, we're required by law to track them in power schools, so letters go out the sixth day, and is it the ninth? There's three, three letters to go out. Three, six, and nine. Did you say eight or nine?
Ten.
Ten, okay. Three, six, and ten. So we're sending all this communication home, and we're tracking those kids. So again, there's additional resources that somebody has to do that could be in the classroom, but we've got to, again, so we're spending a lot of time and effort around the symptom, and I'm dead on it with, with Mr. Cooper, the symptom instead of the root cause of the problem. And that's why we're not getting anywhere, and there's frustration, because we're never going to fix the problem. And the problem is, we've got to start all these kids out on the same playing field. If a student in poverty, all the data says they're two years behind, do we need to find a way to put them in school two years ahead of their non-impoverished peers? We've got to start there, because there's no way to gain two and a half years in education, because you're, you're teaching the student on their current grade level, and they're two and a half years behind. So think about the frustration for the teachers. But anyway, exceptional children. So, we, we are one of those four school systems that our legislators have created, but we're held to a lot higher standard. So when it comes to students with exceptionality, special needs students, we have to, by law, provide them with the services they require, or we can, as you guys have seen, we'll end up in due process, and the attorney will make money, and the state will give us grief, and at the end of it, we'll provide the service. But if you're not the public school system, if you can't provide that service, you can just tell the parent, you know, "I'm sorry, but those services are really too much for us to do. You need to go back to the public school system." Now, how is that fair? A $3.5 million gap in our budget, where's it at? It's in exceptional children. So, we're, we don't, we're not even getting the money to, to fund that. So you're going to make the other three systems send their kids to us, but yet you won't fund us. So I would tell anyone that has an exceptional child, you need to be calling Raleigh daily, because if anyone is getting disenfranchised in this budget crisis, or so-called crisis, it is students with disability. So we get a proportionality letter. So, and I think the attorney said this one time, whether you take federal money or not, strings attached or not, whatever we want to talk about, you're still required to obey the law. And so, there's tons of laws that protect categorical students. So we received a significant disproportionality letter, and I get these letters on and off, but the reason I shared this with the board, we're on mandatory, mandatory improvement. So, what the state does is look at all the subcategories, and once again, once, once the team starts running through all the data, my hopes are is to educate a lot more people than just us on all the, all the things that impact us, that are really hard for us to change. So if nothing else comes out of the task force, I think people will be educated on what's fair and not fair, and at least we can have a collective voice. But one of these, if you're in a school that has higher poverty, you're going to have more behavior issues in that classroom. It's a given. I can show you the discipline data across the district. So with, with poverty issues also comes behavior issues, because again, if you don't have both parents, or you don't have a parent at home with you because they're working two or three jobs, it makes a difference. So, we were deemed, so there's several, there's several categories. Identification is one. So ID mild is, is one of the categories that's not, well, it's been used as a catch-all. But that basically means the child has some disability because everything we're, we're doing, and you heard these guys talk about MTSS. That is a state-mandated program we have to use. And if you're going to get qualified for, for special need services, you have to go through the MTSS tier process. So if we deem a kid ID mild, they have already went through, guys, help me if I'm wrong, anywhere from two to four months worth of data collection, again, time that you have to spend collecting data to determine if the child's eligible for services. It also moves them between tiers. It might be that they get up in tier two, they get some intervention, some supports, that they don't end up in EC. But, so in Aridale County, we're on the watch list for over-identification of African-Americans with ID mild. So what that means is that for whatever reason, our, our collective district is referring more kids with ID mild. However, since we dig in the data, Kelly, Kelly Cooper has every one of these kids by name. So what we're having is, people find out that we have to service their child, and we have some very good programs, day treatment's one of them. When people find that out, guess what happens? They all start getting referred to us. So we're getting kids in that have already been referred, that got us deemed, because normally we accept an IEP for 30 days, and if it looks okay, we don't change it. So what we started doing is doing a reevaluation because of being deemed for ID mild. So that one's on the watch list. I think we're going to come off of that. Where, where we have work to do, and we've been working on it for over a year, is OSS. So our African-Americans, especially African-American males, we're on a mandatory improvement list from EC to make sure that we decrease the, the number of suspensions in out-of-school in the category of African-American males that, that have a disability. So, we've been working on that all year. You've heard Dr. Savage talk about all the things we're putting in place. We're on a watch list for in-school suspension. So the other thing, along with Mike bringing, or Mr. Cooper bringing up attendance, is also suspension. If you suspend a kid every time he walks in the building for something, I'm pretty sure his grades aren't going to be very good. So we, but again, here's what happens, and you guys have brought up some excellent points. So if you have the least experienced teachers with your, the, the most significant needy kids, and you expect them to check the box every day correctly, no. Those teachers don't know how to handle the discipline in the classroom. They weren't taught all this. They were taught content. So when you walk into a classroom that's full of behaviors, and you've not had to deal with it, first thing you, if you have a job at 7-Eleven, it pays more, you're probably going to quit, but hopefully not. You'll get there for the kids, so you're going to stay with this $41,000 job, even though it's well-underpaid. And you're going to say, "I can do this," but you need help. So you're going to inordinately write up a lot of kids, and the administration's going to go, "Well, let's do something different. How can we work with these kids? Kids, what can we do to show them, build a relationship, as Ben has said, so we don't have all these write-ups?" So it's a, it's like a hamster on a wheel, I said this morning. We're constantly chasing ourself, then when we stop, we're right back where we started. But it's all these things that just add up to deem what we're trying to do. But that's what disproportionality means. We're always gauged on that. And the board, I did share with you, so think about Shepherd School. She's got 700 kids, 107 of them are on IEPs, which is Individualized Education Plan, EC, and then she's got another 2025 on 504s. So a huge percentage of her staff, above the district average, just by the look of the draw, is she's got a lot more special needs kids in that building. And I will tell you, if, this is what bothers me about education, too, and I'll shut up, Chairman. So if, if we had a 28-inch door, and your wheelchair's 32, I can tell you all day long, you just need to get through it, Doug. That's exactly what we do to special need kids. They have a flipping cognitive disability. How, how can we sit and say, "You got the same test Brian does. He's an A-plus student. Here's the same test. You, you better pass it." No, no, no. That is all wrong. But that's what we have to do. So again, there's, there's been methodical thought put into a way to destroy public education. I'm telling you guys, it's not a conspiracy theory. We can go through the list. Everything they possibly can think of to ding us has been done. And again, nobody opts us out. What if I say, "Hey, I can't provide your needs"? We're, Dean's going to make a lot of money when we go to court. So I really don't want him to buy another Lamborghini, so I'm not going to do that. So, thank you.
Ms. Hanes, and I'll finish up, and we'll take a break after this, because we may all need it.
Thank you. And thanks to you guys that showed up and presented today. Low-performing schools, it is, it is an issue. But I, I know, serving inner-city Statesville, we, we are, we are those low-performing schools on the list. And talking, I, I'm talking to you guys as a parent of a daughter who was born deaf, and she was, when she was identified deaf, we were already three years behind the ball. We chose to do a cochlear implant, and I, this, I'm just one family, one student. Molly went to preschool at the age of 18 months. Then she went to another preschool at three with her cochlear implant, and every day, she had four days a week of speech therapy. I had homework assignments, but it was play. So I know exactly how, how you guys are feeling, but y'all are times 300, or times 500, or times 1,000 students. I felt like she was, she was behind for years with her language. She is a sixth-grade teacher in a neighboring district, county district. And so, yeah, I worked hard as a mom, but I did what the teachers told me to, mostly. And I advocated for her, as well as my other two daughters. But I agree with Mr. Ribic. He said, he felt like preschool, universal preschool. I think that is, I think that is a big issue, because that, a lot of our families that are identified, you know, they have other issues. They don't, they don't see doing homework as a priority. But you put them in preschool, they are loved on all day. And then I would even expand it to K3, you know, us, putting, you know, highly qualified staff, but put, you know, what if we had two TAs per kindergarten, or two TAs with the teacher, with a teacher? What if? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm dreaming now, I think, but, but I just want to say that, and I thank y'all for what you do, and we're going to work on it together as a team. Thank you.
I'll be as short as I can, but I have five pages of notes. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. I guess, first of all, one of the things I noticed from the data was, to some, if you, if you'd done proficiency as percentages-wise, as opposed to like a normal score, I think you would have saw that some of the low-performing scores had a greater change in proficiency percentages than the non-low-performing scores. So if you want to normalize it to something for your comparison, apples-to-apples comparison, I would, that would tell me the quality of the education that's going on at some of these low-performing schools is not just as good, it's better, you could argue, from that perspective. Now, of course, education is multiple, multiple metrics to, to value it, but I think that one would be true. Proficiency increase. For the high school, for For the high school, for Dr. Parker and Mr. Johnson, how would your letter grade change if you could put back the students within your schools that go to choice programs?
Yeah, I think it's probably low B.
I see low B.
No, because you're looking at, I keep going, you have to, you had another, I mean, that's a pretty close one.
And that changes the narrative.
But it also impacts, is it, you know, work you, it does, it's more than, it's more, it impacts all the methods down the line.
And like I say, that changes the narrative of what people want to think because they get of the label, from the, so, the programs we use, how often are they reevaluated, like letters and stuff like that? I guess that was a question. I just see someone in, you know, that's listening to this may ask that question.
Well, letters is not a choice. It's state mandated.
Okay, that's right. My apologies, I forgot about that. But I excel in some of the other ones. And by the way, I love letters. It made a huge difference with my kids.
We evaluate all the time. I will tell you, I'm like the biggest pest. They will tell, see, watch your heads go, yes. I am constantly pulling, like with our Lexia learning, which is one of our platforms we're using to close gaps, they will tell you they get nasty grooms from me. If I don't see the teachers in there, I don't see kids getting usage. Like I send it out, I'm like, hey, here's how many kids have been in, here's how many teachers have been in. I even tell them whether they checked it or not. I'm like, I see you haven't been in it this month, or kudos to you, yes, you've been checking it. But we check to see how the kids are doing, what their efficacy is. They meet with them monthly or quarterly with the Lexia folks, and we look to say, are your kids growing or are they not? We do the same thing with iReady, iExcel. Then we also send out surveys to all of our staff. The entire secondary staff gets surveys to say, have you used this? Do you like it? Do you love it? Do you tolerate it? What would you prefer to use? And then we look to see if we have the efficacy behind it.
There's continual evaluation.
All the time. Because, I mean, we got to be good steward of the money as well. And we have to make sure with our limited budget, as you know, we're making cuts here, cuts here, cuts here. We have to be sure what we're spending our money on is having an effect on our students. And with letters, I will share too, that we're one of the last districts that's actually giving a stipend to those teachers that are completing letters. Most districts or surrounding districts have stopped doing that. I'm proud to say we continue to reward the teachers for, it's like a college course. So I think our teachers should get a little extra for the amount of time they're putting in, and our instruction facilitators are trainers. So we're fortunate to have trainers within our buildings. Most other districts, the teachers have to do training on weekends and evenings. So just think your teacher's taught all week long, and then, oh, all day Saturday I have letters trained. Do you think you're going to like that program or want to do it? So we're just very fortunate to have our instruction facilitators as well doing that.
On a secondary minor, doing the secondary component with no additional compensation, they get high-five cards from me that says, yes, you did it, you passed E.
I'm just, I was just trying to think if I was external, be a question I would ask.
I'm going to tell you, I was an old banker. That was my first job in the world when I graduated from college, so I was a banker. So I'm always looking for that return on investment. And we do a return on investment sheet where we look to say, how often have you used it? What's the results from it? Susan was just prompting me that, like with iReady, we know that iReady and Ready work. We have lots of data that show that, but it's so expensive that we've had to back away from the Ready products because we can't afford it.
And also, personally, I know about iReady fatigue.
Yes.
Yes.
Secondary.
Secondary. Elementary, we still love it, but secondary has the.
Yeah. You know, I taught high school six years. I'm just thinking, I was thinking when you were doing some discussions, and I was a math and, you know, science teacher, right? Hard sciences, physical science, earth science, physics, whatever. How do you teach the full method individually to 20-some kids at one time? And that's almost what we're doing from this, do you understand where I'm going, Mr. Johnson, Dr. Parker? Because it's like in algebra, it's not algebra, it's math one now. But when you're teaching that, and you've got kids at so many different levels, how do you do that? And that's a very, I'm not trying to be rhetorical, that's a serious question.
It is, yeah, I was going to say, is, first you have to, you have to be able to, and that's what I was talking about with the new teachers.
And that's why it's so hard to, that's why you need an instructional facilitator in these things, because it's hard to do that.
Well, so, and that's one of the, like I said, that's one of the tricks. So first off, you have to, as a new teacher or experienced teacher, you have to be able to know what the gaps are. When I say that, I don't just mean like generic gaps. What strand are they missing? Yes, specific strand. That's work in itself.
Halonomy.
And guess what? And you can't do that during the day. So you talk about nights, weekends, you know, and then you have to group them based on all that data. So it's, you know, like you're talking about a constant reevaluation, it's a constant evaluation. And then you have to group them, then come up with strategies, research strategies, which are, you know, interventionists, you know, instructional facilitators, and say, okay, what can be done to solve this problem? Drilling down to the skill. And sometimes, I'll call, I'll call my counterparts and say, hey, listen, I got a teacher that's, you know, X, Y, and Z, I need help. And they're quick to say, check this, look at this. So it's constant, it's moving parts. It's like an octopus, it's constantly moving.
It's just very different.
It is. It is. And it's challenging.
It's challenging.
That's why we also use like the iReady and iExcel diagnostic, because it'll help us drill down to say, this child is missing number sense, or this child is missing fact fluency. I remember when I taught my first math class 28 years ago, I had no idea, it never dawned on me that the kids in my classroom could not add, subtract, multiply, and divide because they were high schoolers. Now I know why some of them struggled, but.
It's why Master Connect's on board.
Yes, Master Connect, we're trying, we're trying a couple of different platforms right now to see if we can kind of find that sweet spot to work with our kids. But that's why the diagnostic and the MTSS process that Andy was talking about is so important, because that helps us diagnose basically our kids to say, this is our group of kids, and here's the skill gaps.
And that's why tutors and interventionalists are so important, because they can address things you can't during the day, because you've got to go over standard courses study.
And it's a better bang for the buck, because they don't have to come in and try to figure it out.
Exactly.
Here's the plan. Here's the gaps, here's the plan, let's do it.
Sorry, go ahead.
And I know that's high school, but it's very, the exact same thing in kindergarten. When you've got kids coming in that can read on a third-grade level, and then you've got kids that don't even speak English, that don't know a sound, they can't write their name, they don't know the letters in their name, so it's very comparable to nonverbal, you know? So it's the same with trying to do that as far as the different areas that you've got.
Well, Sarah made a good comment that, like, we have kids who are in high school who can't add, subtract, multiply, and divide. And with those kids, we may close their gaps significantly. We've had some high school classes, inclusion classes, where we've seen kids who started out in a kindergarten level, they were still dealing with telling time. And we closed their gaps up to third or fourth grade that year, but they were still taking a test on the ninth-grade level. They're not going to show proficient on that test, nor growth. But we've got data to show that we grew them. The other thing is, and I'll shut up after this, but we have, like our kids who end up in the alternative school or different places, I'm always looking to say, what's the story behind it? So I always look at their transfer history to say, how many schools has this kid attended? And you'll see a trend where they will have been at MB Mills, they'll go to East Elementary, they'll go to Rowan County, they'll come back, they may be at Celeste, they may be at Central, they may, and they bounce all over the place. These kids typically have severe gaps, and you'll see that that child has never passed to ERG in their lifetime because they've moved according to when rent is due, I think, is more likely it. And so you'll see a good handful of our kids who have those issues as well. So that's why the diagnostics that we do and those prescriptive plans that we put in place are very important. But sometimes we're seeing the growth behind the scenes that's still not showing on that grade level test.
Because of the measuring instrument we're using.
Yes.
I'm going to go through this quick as I can. Staffing competition, I think that was discussed by a few of us, and, you know, you do need the best teachers, because that's really growth is the key at a low-performing school, more than proficiency, in my opinion, at those schools. But what can you do to get them there? You can offer culture. I think we're trying to do that with principals can do that, but outside of pay, and money talks and everything walks, that's what I was, you know, that's just reality to some extent, you know? And I would love to do that, and we've talked to Dr. James about it, but budget shortfalls, and, you know, we're just trying to have teachers in the classroom as opposed to doing that. And that's, we have a resolution that's, well, we'll see how that works. But yeah, it's very, very frustrating, honestly, from my perspective there. The key is growth, I say here, substantial growth over time, that gets proficiency up. But if you don't, you were talking about the proficiency level. If the proficiency level changes, you know, I'm good here this year, and next year I've got to be good here, and the next year I've got to be good down there. You know, it's just, yeah. Just two more things, really. There's the old saying, you know, there's lies, dang lies, and of course, then what's the worst lie of all statistics, right? And what are you guys evaluated on? The worst lie of all statistics. Now, you know, Mr. Parker, Dr. Parker, you talked about, you know, one-third are Ds and Fs because of the way we do with this normal distribution, is that correct? The way the system is set up? And normal distribution, bell curve, whatever you want to call it. So my question is, I guess, and I'll give you my thought on it, you know, and Mr. Kubnik brought up, one-third of the schools in the system are considered low-performing. And we have approximately, how many schools total? 30? 38. 38 schools total. In industry, when I worked in industry, and I was a test guy when I worked in industry, if you want to find out if your parts are meeting spec, how do you get to a, I don't want to get too deep into Woods Statistics, two sigma, Dr. Parker, you'll know this, two sigma, 95.5% probability that the part is good. Well, you take 30 parts, and that will represent a normal distribution to about five percentage points. Well, my goodness, we have 38 schools, and about a third of them are low-performing. So dang, the model does work. Is it the school? No. I will argue it's the measuring stick. It's the measuring stick we're using, and then it's the actual measurement. So it's a combination of the statistics of saying, we've got to have a third Ds or Fs. And then what we're measuring, which is the 80/20 proficiency versus growth, you know, I've said before publicly, we should flip it. So what I am proposing, and I'm very serious about this, I am not just blowing steam, and I've said it for a couple of years internally, we need to do our own report card. We need to just do our own report card, and we'll publish it out. The state doesn't like it, pound sand. Well, then, I am very serious. Now, this is just me, this is, I haven't said anything to any of the members of the board about this, I don't think. I think we need to, and if, we can have some internal discussion offline or something, I don't know if, you know, Dr. James can ask you guys what you think. I think we need to do that, Mr. Ribic.
Well, Chairman, the Portia graduate was an attempt to start the state in that direction. There is, we did the board direction. We did work, Mr. Shatley and several of the staff worked, we did provide some options to the state. So there is, it still is on the table about changing the way we determine if a school, again, is not low-performing. So it still is alive, and it looks at multiple metrics. Well, if you look at Florida, again, about six or eight years ago, they went away from the 80/20, they have like seven metrics. It's a very detailed way to look at how to score schools. So I don't know why we just don't adopt that. We didn't have a problem adopting the 80/20 when Florida come out with it, an A to F. So there's only about four states left that use the 80/20, A to F model because they realize it's not a, it's not a true indication of what goes on in our schools.
But even, I mean, I'm just saying, that's nice. Portia graduate, I think it's a good start, it's trying to internally push them, but I say just, let's just do our own. We do our own report card, this is how good from, and here's our reason, maybe we use the Florida metric, who knows? Mr. Ribic, I just think we need to do something to show how good our kids are learning, because they are learning. They really, truly are. And it's not just the kids of a fluency they're learning. You know, granted, we've got schools, some schools aren't learning as much as others, don't have the growth of others, and there's various reasons for it. Sometimes, some of it is us, some of it's externals, you know? And we can get better, but we need our own metric. And have metric with validity, a metric, like I say, maybe we use Florida's or whatever. A metric that we can stand on and say, hey, state says we're this, yeah, but they don't know Aridale County. This is what we are. This is how good we do. And here's our reasons why. Make it simple, make it understandable by everyone, and we publicize it, and we just say, we are that good. I'm done. We're going to take a break, if that's okay, for about five minutes. My apologies for going long, and we'll be back here. It is, and my apologies to everyone else that had to sit through this. We'll be back in 7:55, 10 minutes.
Federal funds of about forty, four hundred thousand dollars. Local funds from different sources catering local supply or local dollars they've collected from sales, probably for my son. He buys five dollars worth of food extra every day in addition to lunch and packs.
We thank you for that.
So he eats well. So that's probably the forty thousand dollars that I've paid there. So that does increase your child nutrition by four hundred and forty. Sorry, I make myself laugh sometimes. Primetime revenues increased by one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is just from additional funds from our primetime program over what they originally budgeted, and this puts us in compliance too. Your other special revenue funds increased by nine hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Your largest being Medicaid reimbursement that we got, seven hundred thousand dollars. So that will help us offset some of the EC costs. We did, surprisingly, we did get more ROTC revenue this year, so that's a, that's a good thing. Our childcare revenue, they, they have paid consistently. We are still in a hole on childcare, but we did receive one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred more than I'd previously budgeted. And then you can see the other breakdown of funds there as well, so. But those are your largest on other special revenue. And then the last page under budget amendments is just requesting permission to make any budget adjustments required to balance the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five by the end of business day on June thirtieth. Obviously, as soon as I submitted the budget amendments and finalized them, went to Dr. James and said, well, we got more money from the state for EC and then all, then the county, which I was expecting, we just not, had not received it yet. We did get the additional one million dollars that they had set aside, so I will come back to you, well, I'll send it to you in an email before June thirtieth, letting you know how that money was utilized to cover some of our potential loss. And with that, that's your budget amendments for June.
Anyone who want to be recognized to have any discussions or questions for concerning the budget from Mr. Adam Steele?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Haynes?
Mr. Steele, it's been eight years since I was on here, so I'm just gonna probably ask a easy question for you. So when it says original budget total and then the amended total budget on some of these, and it's higher, the amended, does that mean that we were, we received revenues and that's why the, the numbers are higher than the original budget? Or is that because we went over budget?
Now, that's like for state, that's money, like you see, seven million dollars. I don't remember all the additional money, but we got money for bonuses throughout the year. And then throughout the year, the state sends for like the ECE, the group home money. So we receive additional funds there that I don't, I don't know till the state send, sends those additional money. Also, within like seven million dollars, you, we received our additional allotment for transportation, which was about probably two million dollars. And then there's some, just some other miscellaneous funds that we receive throughout the year. But yes, that's just additional money, monies that we receive throughout the year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any others? Ms. Sloan?
I got a question that might not be able to be answered. All the stuff that the state requires us to do and, and is not funded for, if you was gonna figure that up and send them a bill just for maybe one year, what would that number be?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even have a clue. I, I don't even know everything. I'll be honest, even as CFO, sometimes I don't even know everything that is not truly funded.
But it would be millions and millions, not hundreds and hundreds.
It would be, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Because there's some things other departments have to do that I wouldn't even know. Like, I don't know everything, I wouldn't even want to know everything curriculum has to do that's unfunded.
Anything else? Anyone else? I have one or two, but that's about it. Go ahead, Mr. Kugman.
Mr. Steele, could you please explain again, did, for the charter, the charter refund of one hundred and ten thousand, did we distribute too much money in this as a credit back?
No, we, we had owed additional because of additional charter school students that, we, we got the money from the county. I just have to, I under budgeted how much, how many charter school students we were gonna have.
Okay.
So I'm just, we had the money budgeted, I just moved it from other categories to cover it, so we would be in compliance.
Yeah, I know all the money that we get from the county that gets distributed to charter schools gets done by you, right?
Correct.
You get to charge a service fee for doing that?
No, we cannot.
We don't get a piece of the action?
We, we have to comply with the law. The state says we have to tell them how much we get per pupil. Once we, like we determine what the county gives us per pupil, two thousand, two eighty-four, we give that to charter schools. They send us a bill every month, and people want a department and accounts payable review, and we pay that each month to any charter school that sends us a bill.
Okay. The other question was, if you could explain again, the debt service for school buses, is that debt we owe or debt the state owes?
Debt the state owes on our buses, but we still have to record it on our books.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I just had a couple, the Medicaid funding, where's, what are you planning on putting that?
That's covering the EC loss. I mean, they're-
We always have a loss in EC.
We look today, and I mean, just in contracted services, we're over about two point five million dollars.
Wow.
And it's, EC is, I mean, it's no secret, we're not the only system, but I will tell you, I mean, we will use fund balance this year, and it's, a lot of it's gonna be related to services within EC, not that they're not doing them, I mean, we're having, it's costing us more money.
And we, we didn't get this Medicaid from, not mistaken, just till a few years ago, is that correct?
We've even, when Ms. Haynes was my EC teacher, my support nurse, yes, not teacher or nurse, school nurse, I was the teacher. We were getting Medicaid back then, but, yes, so we've always done that. It is, it is a service that a company works with us on because it requires a lot of reporting. So it's just not something Adam could do. So we meet every month to talk about it and make sure that we're billing, so like PTOT, speech, vision, all that has to keep meticulous records, turn them in. We make several million dollars back in reimbursement, but North Carolina is one of the states that does not pay for Medicaid reimbursement for transportation. We're one of the very few. That would definitely help our three and a half million dollar shortfall in our budget.
And the other question, then the other question I have is, we had, I think I saw some on Pilot, I think donated ten thousand dollars or something, I saw that, I think it was on the Iredale Free News or something, or some. No, there's no free gas for life for superintendent. But, but, did you know anything about, is that gonna be on the next one, I guess?
Um, we'll probably defer that revenue because it will not be spent in the current year.
Gotcha.
It will not be used, so I'll defer that, so it will not even be up.
So you know you have it, but we'll put on the next one.
If we get that money, I don't know when they'll send it, they may not send it by-
They just kind of put, put out that they've got it, but then they'll send it later.
Yep.
Okay, checks in the mail sort of thing.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, all right, that's all I have. Anything else? All right, and this is a voting item for next week?
Yes, next month.
Next month, okay.
Next week, whatever, yeah.
Next week, yes. And so continuing budget, budget resolution?
Yeah, so on July one, so that we can operate July one, just ask for approval for continuing budget resolution until we get state, federal, local budgets and are able to start processing those budgets.
And any questions for, on that one, Mr. Steele? And that is, Mr. Sloan, you're good? And that is a voting item as well?
That's correct.
That's pretty standard, we do that about every year because they hardly, I don't, can you remember when they had it done on time?
Nope.
Nope, same here.
I think one time in my fifteen years.
As-
They've had it July one.
As CFO, one time?
One time.
Well, that's understandable.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the Weathers Creek School update, and my apologies for it taking so long. Mr. Schenkeric. And you're gonna be up here for a little bit.
All right, good evening, members of the board, Dr. James. I'm here to do a project update on our Weathers Creek High School today. This is not a voting item, but just thought it was an appropriate time to kind of let you know what we've been doing since the start of April when we broke ground on Weathers Creek. And so join with me this evening is Montith Construction, who we're gonna lead kind of the first half of our presentation, and then I'll kind of wrap it up with some, some things that, that we've been working on as a school district related to, to the project that I wanted to update the board on. So I will say before they get started that we've been very impressed and pleased with the work that Montith has done for us. They've committed a sense of urgency to this project that has been, you know, observed every step of the way, and, and we have a great teamwork going with Montith, Iredale Statesville Schools, and of course, our design team with Adams and Associates. So we're very proud of the work that's, that's happening right now. Last week was a little rainy, probably delayed us a little bit, but I still feel like we're meeting our milestones and, and, and they'll kind of walk through the project with you.
We're, we're thrilled to be, be here and to give an update. Lot of exciting stuff going on onsite. As most of you know, it's a, it's a massive site, almost a hundred and fifteen acres. And so we've started some site work, obviously, and Adam is our project manager, and he'll walk you through some of the more, some of the details on some of the work that's going on onsite. I'm gonna drive.
So as Jeremy alluded to, this is essentially the genesis of the project that you can see on your screen here. In this image, we've got some early erosion control measures in place. The entrance you see at the bottom of your screen is our construction entrance that will be used throughout the duration of the project. And at the right-hand side of your screen, you can see the first erosion control pond going in place and just progressing back towards the, the school building pad on the backside of the property. So this image is same part of the site, just a different angle with our drone footage here. This area is a material laydown storage area as well as the site for our temporary construction office. Here, we're looking at some of the early clearing that went on so we could install erosion control measures. That tree line that you see on your right-hand side of your screen is Weathers Creek, where we have a buffer that we are to stay out of, and that line is the, the dividing line between the school building side of the property and the future athletic side of the property. This image is on the athletic side of the property. Again, some early clearing that has began to take place here. Like Jeremy said earlier, a lot of clearing to be done. There was actually fifty-five acres of clearing to be done on this property, so a lot of clearing throughout. This image was from the groundbreaking ceremony that several of you were at. This was in early April, and so a lot of you got to see some of that early work onsite at that time. So here, this is images from just starting our grading operation. This was started once NCDQ released us to begin moving dirt after all erosion control measures were in place. This occurred just a few weeks ago, and we're very pleased to report that we have made a lot of progress since that has taken place, even with the, the rain that Mark talked about earlier. In the top left of your screen there, you can see what we call sediment basin number nine, which will get converted to a permanent wet pond at the end of the project.
Might want to stock that with fish, it's gonna be a big one. We were actually trying to determine how many school buses we could fit in that hole. It's gonna be a big one.
Pictures do not do it justice, but that pond is a little over three hundred feet long and a little over fifty feet wide, and at its deepest point will be about twenty-five feet deep. So, and, and that's one of four permanent wet ponds going in, so massive dirt moving operation going on right now. Again, this is the building pad here. This is an action shot. Our site contractor is actively grading during this. We're essentially looking at the building pad along with the south parking lot, which will be on the left-hand side of your screen. Down at the bottom of your screen, you'll see some black pipe. That's all stormwater management pipe that is onsite, ready to be installed. So here's an overall drone image of the site. You see that tree line there that is Weathers Creek. The opening that you see in the tree line there will actually be a hundred and twenty-one foot pedestrian bridge that will be installed later in the project that will give access from the school side of the property over to the future athletic side of the property. Here we have a rendering that our virtual design and construction department has created for us. This is the building pad and the project site as it currently states with the rendering of the building superimposed on top of it. So you can see how everything will lay out. We've got the south parking lot that's to your left, the north parking lot to your right, and the bus loop that will go all the way around the property. Another rendering here. We're looking from the south parking lot. The corner of the building closest to you will be Area F is what we're calling that. That is your performing arts center. The two wings that you see jutting out to your left-hand side are Area E and Area G. Those are classroom wings. And then moving to the north of the building, we've got Area C and D where the cafeteria and the main entrance of the building are. And then all the way up the north side of the building, we've got Area A and B, which are where auxiliary gym, admin space, and the main gym are. Last rendering here, this is from another corner of the building where you can see those two classroom wings and the bus loop that goes around the property there. Overall, schedule updates, the last ninety days that we've been working, we've been working on mass clearing, grubbing, erosion control measure installation, and excavation of stormwater management ponds. Looking forward, the next ninety days, we're continuing the mass grading operation. We look to get on the building pad and start our deep underground rough ends. This is some electrical rough end and mostly plumbing rough end, and then we will begin our concrete foundations. Following the groundbreaking, some other events that we have to look forward to, the first piece of steel will be erected this fall, and next spring, we will top out our steel structure, and we'll have our steel topping out ceremony. Pass it to Mark. Any questions on what you've seen so far? I got some more things, I can just move right along, Dr. Knight, if that's-
Anyone recognized so far? Let's do it.
Okay. All right, so I wanted to kind of share some additional updates regarding the project as well. Obviously, the budget piece is one that I want to keep in front of you. You know, our county was, was, you know, super helpful on, on getting this thing off the ground, committing a hundred and thirty million dollars to, to get us going. Obviously, that's short of what we'll need to complete the entire campus, but we're, we're excited to be where we're at right now. So when you take that one thirty number, you kind of have some other pots here that you have to kind of move things around to, to make the math work with one thirty. We're kind of operating, these are all kind of estimated numbers, but a hundred and fourteen million dollars in construction costs, seven million dollars in design. You know, keep in mind, when we had to essentially take off a, a phase of the project, there was a lot of work in design and particularly on the civil engineer side to make all of this work, and, and that costs money when we are able to do that. So that, you know, increased our design costs for the project. We're also operating with contingency less than three percent, which I will say is, is very aggressive for a project of this magnitude to have only three million dollars in contingency. And then a piece here in the FFNE testing, technology equipment, all of these other soft costs that we have in the project, we've significantly reduced the cost or what we're contributing to these items here. Scott Hager's, you know, worked with our FFNE package, and he's done a great job cutting some costs there and kind of looking at some different packages to try to, you know, save some money there. Essentially, you know, the bottom line is we're trying to get us the, the best product we can, looking at a few value engineering project or, or ideas along the way to kind of make room for money in other places without significantly reducing the scope of the school or, or kind of what the original concept was intended to be. The other piece that I want to tell you as we're kind of working along with this is our redistricting process. We have partnered with Central Lina Regional Council and the Western Piedmont Council of Government to assist us with this process. You know, it's a, that's a, you know, can be a, a bit of a sticky situation when you're redistricting. There's a lot of emotion tied to this type of work, and so we wanted to bring in experts to assist us with this, and so we've partnered with them, and they're in the midst of, of doing this work for us. The directions that Dr. James has provided them is to give us a, a few different ideas or generations, or three different ideas that we could kind of present to you to kind of look at, and so that's what their project is right now. They have geocoded into GIS all of the building permits that are out there right now to kind of look at long-term growth across the district and kind of coupled those with current school boundaries to determine what it may look like in, in design. You know, right now, we're looking at not just Weathers Creek High School, but Parkertown Elementary. We could look at expanding this to other, across the entire district, but of course, that's a much bigger project for these groups to do right now. So right now, their focus is on our two new schools, and they hope to have the first generation of school boundaries available by the first of August, end of July, first of August. So here's an example of the maps that they shared with us, I think this was last week, Dr. James, that shows all of our entry, our elementary schools, and then this is where they have geocoded those new building permits in those areas. And, you know, not, not a ton of surprises there of what we see that, you know, obviously in the southern end, we see where most of those building permits are located, and then starting to see a lot there in the Statesville area as well, too. And so they're gonna look at all of this and, and give us our best options for both Parkertown and, and Weathers Creek. I also wanted to put in front of you with the athletics. You know, we originally had a concept, a project budget of twenty-eight million. We now estimate that to rise over thirty-five million dollars. There's economy of scale anytime you're doing these projects, and so, you know, there was some cost savings on having some of, you know, having one GC do all of this work. We can, you know, we, if we're interested in picking this up at some point, we kind of estimate that August of twenty, twenty, to have an August twenty-twenty-seven opening, we need to start doing this type of work within one year. There's long lead times that we've seen with other projects that we've done in the district for bleachers and lights, and we estimate somewhere between eight and ten months. We could look at bidding this project out to try to get the most competitive pricing for it. Potentially, Montith would be interested in doing some work like that, or we can just look at rebidding it. If we're opening without onsite athletics, I think the biggest question mark for, to put in front of you is that we're gonna have to determine what that's gonna look like for our students that attend Weathers Creek. You know, there's obviously a few different options that we have there, none of which, you know, jump off the paper as excellent options or one that won't come with some, some challenges. And, you know, obviously, we can look at having students be a part of Weathers Creek High School and, and being a Falcon and wearing a Falcon jersey, but playing their games and practices at another school site. You know, the obvious answers there would be like a Lake Norman High School or South Iredale High School. Those campuses are busy with their own athletics, and that would be pretty challenging to coordinate some type of effort like that. You think of something like marching band that's often overlooked or maybe not thought about, but I mean, how do you load up all of your band equipment to, to practice for marching band? And, and so there's things like that that, that we'll have to figure out. Obviously, the indoor sports like volleyball, basketball, wrestling, winter cheerleading, those are indoor sports, and so they can participate and do those within the school with no issue. The gym is still part of the project that we're doing there. The other option we would have is that students wouldn't play for Weathers Creek High School. They would continue to play for their previous high school, which is another not ideal solution either. You know, you go to Weathers Creek from eight-thirty to, to three, and then you go to South Iredale and you're a Viking from three-thirty to whatever time at night. So those are the, you know, things that we need to start thinking about. Now, I didn't present or put any of these up here to think that we're gonna have solutions today with it. I just thought it'd be important to put these things in front of you so you can start thinking about those, and with your direction, we can start looking at some other options. We've already talked at both an executive cabinet, and I know that we've talked with Mr. Pasley, our athletic director, about some of these. So these are things that we're starting to think about, and, you know, that time will be here before we know it if, that we'll have to decide that. I think the obvious next piece that we're working on right now is this redistricting process, which I think would start to identify the students that will be going to Weathers Creek, and then from there, we can start talking about some of these other ideas. Now, obviously, athletics is only one part of it, but without those, that campus and having that phase two, then, you know, these are things that we're starting to think about right now. So that is the information that I have for you. Unfortunately, this is a rendering, and it's not what it looks like right now. You guys are always welcome to come by. They got a really nice gator out there, I don't know what it is, gator, I guess, that they can drive you around, put your hard hat on, and I think Mr. Hope came out one day and rode out there with us, so you can do that. I've said I'm gonna bring my son one time so he can see all those heavy machinery, drive around there.
Just be very careful, Mr. Hope, he's a little fragile.
Yes.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Schenkeric and Montith? Go ahead. Mr., a, a good-
Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Sloan, go ahead, then we'll, Ms. Haynes.
Responsibility and liability. We're gonna have county inspections, we're gonna have tire on inspections, we're gonna have sole engineer, design teams, and, and all of this is good. For myself, I won't spend a million dollars in my lifetime, and we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars, and we've got schools that had design flaws in the beginning that didn't show up for years. And I'm sure the warranties is gonna be out, but it seems like when we spend this much money, that, that there ought to be some backing behind the ones that's making a lot of money, the engineers, the design teams. And is there any liability that's gonna last past four or five years on our school?
Ask David or Scott about- I mean, I think a lot of what we did during the programming piece there, bringing in different departments and groups to look at it, both from our maintenance department, the instructional staff, I mean, this is common things that we do. We're doing that same process right now with Parkertown Elementary. We just had a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago to get input from some of the people that are working in the school, and we already had a meeting with them to, with our maintenance department, each one of our departments within the, the department to give feedback on how we design or what things they want to see or things that they don't want to see. Now, obviously, I wasn't in my current role when Weathers Creek was, was designed, but I can assure you that those types of conversations and meetings occurred, and people were given input with that.
Sloan, you good? Ms. Haynes?
Mr. Shankuric, the, the slide on redistricting partnered with Western Piedmont Council of Governments and Central Lina Regional Council. Is there a cost to that?
Yes. Yes, we did contract with them for that. I think Adam could probably pull that for us if we need to.
Well, I was just, because I'm thinking we'll probably need to look at the whole county, you know, district at some point, but, okay.
Yeah, we just started there. And we, we've had lots of discussions, you know, do you kick that nest 38 times or you do it twice? But we, you know, we, we kind of just landed on starting here right now and kind of see where this, this takes us. I, I really do think that by and large, that, that where the schools are located kind of geographically kind of does some of that for us. And, you know, we've, we've explained before that sometimes you can't always move a kid through two districts to get to another school boundary. It just doesn't make sense where the kids are and where the schools are. And so we'll, we'll see what this leads us to, and then we can maybe make some of those decisions later on in the process. I will say that particularly Western Piedmont Council of Government, it's very interesting as I've had more conversations with different cities and counties, there's a lot of groups that use both of these. And I've, I've received lots of really good reviews from all, from both of them. So.
The nest you're talking about is a hornet's nest, I think.
Yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Kubik?
For our Montith friends, do you see any supply chain challenges right now that might affect your timeline?
So obviously, we still have some stuff left over from the COVID days, but we identified long lead items day one. And we keep a pretty accurate procurement log. And we released most of the long lead items already, or we're in the process of releasing those to make sure we meet the schedule. So we don't anticipate any additional delays with material outside of gear and a few of those things, mechanical equipment that we've already identified and already released expedited.
So is there anything high risk, would you say?
At this point, we don't, we haven't identified anything that we consider to be high risk. Yeah.
Good. Thanks. Mr. Shankuric, with your redistricting, you showed the two graphics of the elementary schools and the high schools. Are you going to also include a middle schools in the redistricting process? Are we going to have three different maps or just these two?
No, we're going to start with just these two. We're just going to look primarily at our new elementary school and our new high school. But we could expand this at some point if that's your desire, Dr. James' recommendation. We can expand what we are contracted Western Piedmont and Central Lina.
So isn't, isn't the work that's going to be done essentially, you know, it's covering the whole county, right, with all the density of the housing? Isn't, so I'm just saying that if, would it save us money to include middle school in this or not?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that right now. But yeah, they, they have, I think it was from a GIS standpoint, we did provide information for all of our students K-12 across the entire county. So I think that they've, they've looked at the entire county. But I think the actual work, the work that they're going to be doing from now, from last week up until the end of July, is going to be looking at the boundaries of our two new schools.
Okay.
But I can explore that and find that out for you. Sure.
And the last question on your slide about athletics, when it comes that time, are we, we, when you say, you know, executed a bid process a year prior to, that would include Montith, that could include others as well? It doesn't have to, we're not restricted to Montith, are we, at that point?
We are not.
Okay.
No, and, and some of that will just depend on timing, too. It, it might make total sense to talk about a change order with Montith that reflects original pricing with any type of inflationary cost added back into it, because they can just go from, you know, they, they are already on site and they go from one project or phase one to phase two. But if it takes time and Montith has, you know, removed equipment and all that stuff, it may be, it may be totally worth just rebidding it out. So I think we'll have the options. And we're just going to have to play that a little bit by ear as we get closer. Obviously, first thing we got to do is get that money.
Yeah, because the terminology about change order pricing, I shouldn't read that as a penalty, right?
I think, I think that's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? I have just a couple. I guess, first of all, we're still ongoing, August 2027. That's, I'm, I'm going to hammer that every time because that's the thing, we've got to have it open August 20. So we're still thumbs up on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my, and the other one's just kind of fun because this is out in the country, out in the country, right? Have you seen any critters out there?
Mainly some deer, a couple of black snakes.
Couple of black snakes, but no.
And some turkey.
And some turkey? Ah, some turkey. No bear?
No.
I had permission from Mr. Bill.
You do not have permission from Dr. Nigal. Yeah, but we'll, we'll discuss that offline. Ground dogs? Ground, do ground, that's, that's the question I do. Seriously, ground dogs cause you trouble? I had, I had a pasture and ground dogs, yeah. No, they're just too much for ground dogs. They like to watch you. People do stuff. I don't know if you've noticed that. Okay, that's all I've got. That's all I've got. Oh, you had one more. Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Sorry.
I wasn't asked to pass this loan, but I liked that passing loan compliments. And I was talking to one of the county commissioners and a well-earned and well-deserved compliment come to you, Mr. Shankuric, for the job you're doing. And I appreciate it.
I think we're good. Thank you very much. And just keep on working and just, just get it done by August 2027. We got to open up. Thank you. All right, Mr. Shankuric, next on the agenda, you have approval for metal detector purchase. This will be a voting item.
Yes. Yeah, back in, I guess it would have been late February or so, we were awarded a grant. Every year, North Carolina has a safety grant that they provide for us, DPI does. It's the, comes out of the Center for Safer Schools grant. And we made an application for this grant, actually requested $400,000. If you remember, the year prior, we were awarded bus cameras. Now we have new bus cameras on all of our school buses. So that same grant came back this year. We were only awarded, I should say only, but it's a lot of money. We were awarded $150,000 towards equipment and just over $2,200 in training for that equipment as part of this grant. So we kind of had to rethink the scope of how we would utilize it. We originally were looking at providing metal detectors at the schools that don't have metal detectors currently. We use them at Statesville High School and Northview Academy. And so we were trying to expand that and have that as kind of a daily piece for, for our other high schools. With this amount of money, we had to kind of rethink the scope of it. And so we went out to three different companies to, to collect bids on it. And the Point Security Incorporated came back with a price of $1,200, $125,873.76 for seven metal detectors, as well as some miscellaneous items that were included in that request. Because that low number came out a little bit lower than actually I thought, I think we could probably expand that to probably an additional metal detect, one more metal detector, which would give us eight metal detectors that we could use at Lake Norman High School, South Iredale High School, North Iredale High School and West Iredale High School. That would give each of the high schools two metal detectors. We wouldn't have enough to do daily checks there, but we could utilize them for athletic events and get them familiar with using them, getting our guests and visitors familiar with them. Currently now, we use a wanding system. If you've been to any of our athletic events, this is a lot faster to do this. This is an open gate systems, very, it's the same exact system that we use at Statesville High School that has been, I think, very effective. So we hope to do this now. I'll also say there is opportunities for some other grants that, that we've been told that there might be a partnership with the Iredale County Sheriff's Office there to increase the number of metal detectors that we have there to add in addition to this. So there is that opportunity there. So this will be a voting item next week.
So any questions, comments for Mr. Shankuric concerning the metal detector purchase?
How portable are they? You mentioned, mentioned them at the games as well.
Yes, very easy. That's one of the reasons that we like this system. You can pick them up and move them. The plan we have here is you get suction cups or they have heavy bases to them, too. So you can use them outside or inside tile floor, concrete. They're very versatile, very easy to pick up. They actually just use a little Milwaukee 48 volt, you know, like a cordless drill battery on them. Is, I'm sorry. Sorry, smaller, yeah. I was thinking about my Milwaukee.
Anyone else?
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Does the vendor provide the unboxing, assembly, setup, calibration, or do we have to do all that?
Yeah, they'll come by and calibrate them, test them and kind of show us how to use them. I didn't ask them to, to provide that in the bid, just so I had kind of apples to apples when I created the bids there. But we do have that additional $2,000, $2,250 in training that we can utilize that at our campuses. It's pretty simple. I mean, I've seen it at Statesville High School numerous times. If you just come by and a morning arrival, it's a pretty, and every time, I'm sure if you've visited Statesville High School, you've gone through the open gate system. It's a pretty easy system. The kids there are very used to it. It works pretty efficiently.
So the training money we would use to pay the vendor to train our school employees?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. But thank you. And actually, I noticed you got a two-year warranty out of it versus one on the other two. So well done.
Yes, yeah, we were kind of surprised that, that bid came in a little bit later. So.
Anyone else? I just have one question. Okay. Because you won't have people using handhelds, are we going to be able to lower the cost of security at the gates, like over at West Iredale when they used, they had multiple people doing, will they, or will this, will this help reduce cost or fewer personnel for security?
I don't believe that it will reduce personnel. I think it will stay the same. I think instead of using the handheld wands, they'll now use those open gate.
And then maybe handhelds if they need to do a little bit furthermore?
That's correct.
Good. And it, it should facilitate a faster entry. I know at West, sometimes that was an issue a little bit at some of the football games.
Yes, that's correct. And I, also, I did mention this, too. If we were to do this and, and, and things work out or we get additional devices, because we now have these devices already in place and they're familiar, we're hopeful that having additional items or devices will be a pretty seamless transition.
This is a voting item.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, very good. So, are you good, Mr. Angel? Okay. One more for you, Mr. Shankurics, is approval of bid for Katz Welding Shop?
Yes. Yes, we, back, you know, we've, we've talked about the welding shop. Mr. Woody has, you know, presented that maybe last month or the month prior, some equipment. You know, this is a partnership joint effort between Iredale Statesville Schools and Mitchell Community College, our CTE department, curriculum and instruction, a lot of people involved in the development of this project. But we finally were able to, to take it to bid in about two weeks ago. And so we came with several different bids that came back. I believe there were maybe seven or eight total, with the low bid going to LeFave Construction Company in the amount of $650,000. Adams and Associates was the design team again on this project here. And so it would be my recommendation that we accept this low bid to move forward this project. In order to pay for this, I am recommending that we use repair and renovation lottery funds that we have available. I've already spoken with DPI to ensure that this project, there's certain qualifications, there's certain projects that only work with certain pots of lottery funds. This is a repair and renovation one. And because this is technically a classroom that's being renovated, we can use it for this purpose. And we have the balance there to do that. Obviously, anytime we use lottery funds, those are things that we have to go to the county for approval. So if it is your approval, I will then go to our county commissioners to get approval to use those lottery funds.
Questions from anyone? We've had some good discussion on this previously, I think. Mr. Kubik, go ahead.
Mr. Shankuric, could you briefly just say what the scope of work is?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Woody explain that. 30 welding stations, yeah.
Yeah, the, the process is involving flipping welding from where it currently is to the other side with heavy equipment, making room for an additional 15 welders for a total of 30. And in doing so, we have to really add a whole new central system of extracting the fumes out that we talked about last time, and then putting a central system outside to that circulates in and out to help that system. And then in part of that and going in in the work, it's just doing some renovation work inside to get things ready for the welding labs to go in to do that. There's some concrete removal in there, two big pillars that are in there the size of this podium. Things that have to be done in there to help renovate that, to get it ready to go, in addition to the equipment, as Mr. Shankuric said, that we've already talked about in partnership with Mitchell that we've done. So we're excited to be at this point and ready to go to the next level with your approval to get this hopefully going as soon as we can in the fall.
Anyone else? Again, this is a voting item, and so we'll vote on that at the next meeting. And hopefully it's able to get through. I think it's a partnership, partnering with Mitchell can, is a good thing here. I think we're really doing some good stuff with those kids and giving them some job-ready skills. One more thing on the agenda, thank you very much. And if you've been following along local state politics, let me pull something up here on my phone, probably noticed, me and noticed about the, if you're in education, the budget that's passed by the House and Senate, of course, the House passes their budget, Senate passes their budget, they flip, they switch, and then they kind of vote each other and they kind of put the, put them, put them together and try to come up with something. Seeing what I saw, and I thought, you know, there's a big difference in the budgets between the House and the Senate. The House budget, I can just read you a little bit. Beginning teacher pays would raise by about 22% by fall of 2026. Be the largest increase that I've ever seen since I got into education when I was a beginning teacher in 1988. You know, it, it basically starts at $50,000 and 26, 27. That wouldn't be this year, but in a year from now. That's amazing. I mean, that has been a goal for years. So the question may be, why is this House doing this? You know, hopefully, they realize the value of education and they see the need for, that we have for teachers. I think part of it is that. I think the other part is South Carolina. South Carolina is going to be raising teacher pay up to $48,000 a year. And those counties along the border are going to see a flight of teachers if they don't. The Senate budget unfortunately would raise teacher pay from 24, 25, beginning teacher from $41,000 to $41,510. So a $500 increase, which in no way even includes inflation. And honestly, if you include inflation, that's a, and, and that's with low inflation. I mean, that's considered, and, you know, inflation has been lower than predicted. And with low inflation, that's two or three percent inflation. That's just, that's barely a 1% raise over two years, if you look at the numbers, which, yeah, that's, it's almost an insult from my, from my perspective. It does bump up other teacher pays as, as we go along, as you increase in years, maybe not as much as it should, but, you know, no bill is perfect, but that gum, it increases all of them. Step increase, major, there are step increases as well. It introduces master teacher pay, which is in the field. There's work for, actually, it increases the amount for EC a little bit. It's not a lot, but there's an EC increase. You know, it, it's a good bill from my opinion. I, I talked to Jeff McNeely, Representative McNeely, and Representative Todd Carver about it. Both of them said they thought it was a good budget for education, a good budget for North Carolina and helping North Carolina stay ahead in, in quality education. And I should say stay, get, getting further ahead in it. Pay is a big part of it. And we discussed that a little bit earlier. It raised the limits on students with disabilities. I don't know if you saw that, from 13 to 13.25%.
Well, also, not, not in the bill, insurance is going up quite a bit. So healthcare So healthcare, it's going to be rated on, based on your salary. So some it won't change, but a lot that it will, and out-of-pocket expense is doubling.
Understand. Nothing's perfect. And, but, I mean, and they talk about sausage getting made in politics and...
Absolutely. This budget helps offset that, whereas the Senate would take us negative.
So with the Senate budget with increased insurance costs, you'd actually be losing money, not even taking into, not even taking into account inflation from a medical point of view. They expands teacher training, which is a big thing for me that I see coming through because you don't see kids trying to become teachers anymore. More funds for literacy, you know, I can go forward with that. But it's a good idea. It's a good budget. And resolutions, since I've been on the board, what good do they do? Who knows? I mean, Ms. Haynes and I talked a little bit about that offline. But, you know, if it does pass, I'd like to run this by some other school systems. I'm on an email group with, and maybe see if we can get some inertia going forward. One thing I've noticed in education, if you try to get a group to do something, by the time the group figures out what they want to do, sometimes the time has passed. So sometimes you just got to plunge forward, develop inertia, and bring some people along with you as you go. And in this respect, I think that this was a, this is a proper way of doing it. It's up to, y'all can vote as you see. So let me go ahead and read it. It says, "Whereas it is duty of the legislator and elected officials to poll the right for every child in North Carolina to receive a sound basic education..." I'm reading this fast, Kevin, Dr. Mr. Angel, because I know how you are. "...by investing adequately in education system by addressing significant per pupil funding gap North Carolina faces. Whereas the shortage of certified teachers," which is big, "is a significant issue facing many school systems in North Carolina. The state needs to take action to address this issue and assist in recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers, including but not limited to increasing state salary allotments, reinstating graduate teacher pay, and reinstating longevity pay for teachers. Whereas the proposed budget adopted by the NORT," that needs to be North, but we can change that. Mr. Shatley, I'm very upset with you. "Carolina House of Representatives for the 2025-2027 biennium, the House budget appropriates approximately $12.4 million the first year of the biennium and $12.7 billion in the second for K-12 education initiatives. Whereas the House budget includes an average increase in teacher salary of 8.7% over the biennium." Over the Senate, which is like 1.2% on average. "And increases starting teacher pay to $50,000 in the second year of the biennium. Whereas the House budget reinstates graduate pay for teachers and instructional support personnel as well as other salary supplements and bonuses for licensed employees. Whereas the House budget also provides funding for teacher preparation and apprenticeships, student literacy initiatives, and student safety and health. Whereas the House budget provides significant investment into North Carolina public schools is focused on teacher recruitment and retention," which is something we've talked to our representatives here multiple times, and they've listened very well, and you know, it's good to see this. "And lays a solid foundation to meet the constitutional requirement of funding every student's right to a sound basic education, which is in North Carolina state constitution. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Education supports the proposed House budget..." Should that be Board of Education of Iredale County, or just leave it as Board of Education? Our name's just top. So yes, it is the Board of Education of Iredale County. "And proposed House budget urges the North Carolina Senate to adopt the K-12 funding initiatives proposed by the House of Representatives. Now be it further resolved, that the Board of Education urges the North Carolina legislature to consider increasing the salary of veteran teachers and instructional support personnel person who are present similar to or equivalent." So we can ask them to do that, but hey, we're happy that they're doing what they're doing. So, comments? Anyone want to be recognized?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, my comment is just I'd be happy to make a motion to, you know, to approve this resolution. I think it's a great example of how we advocate and fulfill our duty as board members to advocate for public education. I appreciate the work that went into it by Mr. Shatley and others who helped pull us together. So, yeah, thank you for bringing this to us, and hopefully you can get a motion and vote for it.
And I just want to say, my apologies for not getting it to you earlier on the agenda. It just, things happen, and we just got it really finalized, I think, on Monday, today.
That's my fault.
That's okay. Well, you're not perfect. And... Okay, Mr. Sloan?
Who are we sending this to?
We'd be sending it to, as far as I know, the, our representatives in this, and would we send it to Mr. Berger himself?
You send it to whoever you want to.
We will send it to Mr. Berger himself. We will send it...
In the past, we sent it to every senator and...
Send it to everyone.
House of Representatives.
I've sent it to the House, sent it to the senators.
I would send it to the county commissioners and ask them to do a joint resolution.
Yeah.
So what did it cost to get this worked out?
No more than an architect to design a high school.
I like it, and I'm not really complaining, but if there was a lot of cost in it, we should have discussed before.
Well, I...
It was not a lot of cost, but...
Yeah. I mean, it just took, it wasn't much. And shoot, I could have...
He said $20.
Okay, $20.
That's not an accurate figure.
Evidently, things didn't take speed typing in school.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think this is great. It's definitely supportive of what our principals just said that they need, you know, for performing schools, highly qualified staff. And this is one of the things that helps do that. Can we add pre-K funding to this?
I am okay with that. I did not, this is not, you know, I said I would try to breathe things to you, you know, at least in a full document, but I'm not saying it can't be amended. I wanted to do something, asked for something short and sweet. When I talked to Mr. Shatley about it, that's why it's only one page. I like one-pagers. And so that's why it is, that is. But I'm okay if the board wants to add pre-K funding. Either they can do it by acclamation, that would be in the "now be it further resolved" section.
Does it keep it to one page? We don't want to violate that. That would be...
It would, I don't think that would be, I think that would be okay. But that would be up to, either the board would vote, or we could do it by acclamation. Okay.
Very good. Well, if we, if you agree to amend where we can add pre-K funding to this, I would like to ask for that amendment.
I'm cool with that. Mr. Kupinik?
Mr. Chairman, I support this as well. Thank you for bringing this forward. Just a question. I would support this board passing similar things on education legislation that the state deals with. And there's, if not dozens of bills, and we're probably behind the power curve on it. But I think in general, I think it would be wise for us to pay attention to legislation that's an ongoing basis and either get behind or get opposed to that legislation that we feel strongly about. And I think if we could develop a process for doing that on a regular basis so that we could continually feed throughout the year, that feedback to the legislators.
My initial, I agree in principle. My initial thought is, and I would, just from my perspective, I've only done this for, what, six months now, so I'm learning as I go as well, is that, you know, if we do it judiciously, it gets more attention than do it a lot, if that makes sense.
Well, that's true. I just wondered if this is a responsibility of the legislative committee to track the education bills.
Now, I actually, I, if they want it to be, and I think I brought it by, I told you guys I was working on this, correct? And you guys were cool with, I didn't, I haven't showed it to anyone. I mean, like I say, we got done today on this. But yeah, yeah, continually paying attention to what's going on, definitely.
I mean, I mean, it doesn't do any good if one person of the board emails Todd Carver and Ms. Sawyer saying, "I like this bill, but nobody else is there to..."
And that's, that's one of the things, I think when I got on, I wanted to, I don't, I thought, and part of it was COVID, Mr. Kupinik, I think. But we were inward looking so much, I don't know if Dr. James would agree, that I think we did not look outward looking towards the legislature, which is part of our roles as we are trained as a school board to do. And now I think, with some of the chaos of COVID is ending, I think we can start looking outward and doing more of this. To answer your question...
There is a group that, I'm not sure if Mr. Kupinik attended any of the meetings, I think he did. But we were just chatting here, I'm not sure if it's still in existence, but Cabarrus, Cleveland, there were a group of about six or eight districts trying to do something as a collective.
I think I am on that email chain as chairs. And maybe vice chairs may be on it as well, Ms. Haynes. I'll find out. And they just, I got an email randomly a few months ago on this. Go ahead.
Sure. My input would be that, you know, serving on the legislative committee, there is an enormous amount of legislation, as you know, that comes through. So I welcome any, you know, collaboration or input as we digest all that. I do not have the capacity as one person to read every bill that is introduced. I do think it's good to use the North Carolina School Board Association as a kind of a funnel, you know, that helps drive it. But I think as we strengthen our ways of working together as a board, to some of what we discussed earlier today, it will provide opportunities for more of these judicious decisions around what legislation we want to collectively support. And there'll be ways for, whether we committee it or not, for us all to contribute. So just, just kind of echoing and connecting to some of what everyone has said.
Yeah, the, the only thing, I guess, and I have no, I'm not against voting it for tonight. Actually, I think it would be a good idea, but at the same time, I guess my only question I have, and more I think about it, is do we let it sit for a week and vote in front of much more people than we have here and maybe get more media response for it in that respect? Because, and that...
But you're not going to be here, right? But you're not going to be here.
I can't, it's...
Yeah, let's do it when you're not here, so we'll get the credit. I'm just kidding, Doug.
Yeah, we could change that if needed. But, and we could also do it now and just go for it, because really, I mean, yeah, it would be nice to get community involvement, to let them see what we're doing, and hopefully, I don't see anyone from the media here anymore. They've all left for some reason.
We could vote for it tonight, Doug, and then still mention it next week.
And they'll mention it next week. Record and landmark?
What would be a reason to vote for tonight? There's, why? I mean, standard practice, we don't.
Yeah, we normally let things sit for a week, and that was my initial thought.
So, I mean, what is the urgency?
Rhonda, go ahead. Excuse me, Mr. Hope, go ahead.
The more people, if we do it at the next meeting, the more people hear, and the more people talking about it, get the public involved in it, parents talking and everything like that, I think it'd be of an impact, and it would be just for the board.
Anyone else? Anyone else make comments? Mr. Sloan? Okay. So if it's okay with the board, I will, we'll hold off, we'll put this on the agenda for next week. Ms. Haynes, you'll be having, running that meeting, and, and we'll add, if it's okay with the board, we'll add the pre-K to it, now be it further resolved, fully fund pre-K. And we'll just change the date and change the typo, and we will be, we'll do it then. We'll do it then. All right. Thank you very much for entertaining this. I've been wanting to do something, and this seemed, I don't know, it seemed right. The teachers need to know we're trying our best and backing them because pay matters. Let's just be honest, pay matters. I got out of education because I realized I could not reach my goals with the money I was going to make as a high school teacher going forward. And that's why I went back to grad school and went into research. So, thank you very much. So next on the agenda, with no reason to go in closed sessions, I have no announcements to make.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll have a few.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I do want to send a shout out to Charles Kelly and Mr. Angel for showing up at Cool Springs Elementary. And one of the things Charles wanted to do as he was exiting the board is make sure there was an American flag and a North Carolina flag at Cool Springs. That was one of the schools in his district. So I believe there's 36 or 38 classrooms. But anyway, we bought, or Charles and I think Mr. Angel bought, you didn't buy? Mr. Kelly bought them, so you just appeared in the photo. All right, that's good. So 40 each, and I do have the individual that's going to put them up free of charge. I do need the board to tell me how you would like to do. There's a bunch of policies, and we had them all on tonight. But the problem, those policies are all the same. If you recall, the Dear Colleague letter, it takes 60-some policies and takes out, excuse me, the verbiage for DEI. Go ahead.
So, I think all board members received the North Carolina School Board Association memo in regards to those policies that had issues or raised issues such as diversity, inclusion, equity, those sorts of things. That's been given to all board members, and it may be just appropriate. I don't know if you want to have a work session on any of that, but I think just having some sort of understanding of what the board wants to do. We provided our guidance subsequent to the School Board Association memo and said, you know, here's the places you might want to focus on. We've had that kind of conversation before, just very briefly. So I think this is what you were asking?
Yes, so we just need to know, we need to bring them all at one time. We can send them out to you again, but they're all about the same thing, bringing in our policies into compliance.
No, 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 it is not.
Oh, it's not, okay.
No, it is not. School Board Association just merely saying, here's where these words are referenced.
Okay, yes.
There's nothing out of compliance really with any of the policies necessarily, except for a few things that we highlighted in our guidance that you may want to particularly look at, especially one reference in the employment processes and procedures. So I think maybe what we should do is just send that memorandum back out to you all and let you kind of read through it. It's in a chart format. It's where it has the policy language and what policy number it's from. Then it has the School Board Association rationale of, are the issue raised, or however the word is used in that section. And then our thoughts on that, like, sure, if you want to change this, that's fine. If you want to take it out, if not, that's fine too. Or we might say, yeah, you should really look at this provision and have a discussion about it. You know, make sure it aligns with your own thoughts and beliefs at the moment in time as well. And so there were a couple that were like that. I think a lot of them are sort of just kind of benign references to the word. You know, diversity is used a lot of different ways, or equity is used in a lot of different ways too. I will also state that sometimes the School Board Association raises a policy that has particular language in it that we have not adopted already. Like there are some, there are some particular provisions where sex is defined, like on the basis of sex is defined to be a little bit broader, like under the old Title IX rules, we never adopted that. So you don't have that in your policy. So when you get to that section, you're like, oh, I think I might want to remove that. It's not there to begin with in yours. So there are a few instances of that as well, if that makes sense.
So we took those with, again, excuse me, for compliance. So there's a Dear Colleague letter that went out multiple times and had about three interpretations. So the School Board Association said, here's how to get your policies at least somewhat in line. But we chose not to go with the new, the new civil rights and all the legislation that was put out. So we held off on that. So our team has basically taken what your wishes were and went through those policies to make sure they concur with what your original decision was, that we weren't going to the new policies coming out of the Office of Civil Rights or from U.S. Department of Ed Title IX. So there's a bunch of policies. So if we want to do these over the next few months, you just need to tell me, but it's going to take forever and a day to go through them, because it's something like 60-plus policies.
Do we want, or the other option is, do we do them all in a batch? Is that correct?
Yes, so my team tells me they've gone through them, and they all refer to the same thing. And splitting them up doesn't make sense to the team because they're all about the same thing.
Yeah, but see, that's kind of the hard part about this is, again, some, most, almost all of these policies are not legally uncompliant now. But like, for instance, there's a whole section in your policy manual, in your business side of things, talking about minority business participation. That is state law, right? And so, and all that means is, like, when you are going out and you are seeking the contracting, you know, a bid contract for construction, that you have a certain responsibility and requirement, and these folks back here can tell you what they have to do, that minority businesses are just given a shot. Not that we give them a leg up on bidding, you still got to go with the lowest bidder, but that you ensure that minority businesses are aware of bidding, that the contractor makes sure that subcontractor minority-owned businesses are aware of the potential for subcontracting, that sort of thing. And so there's just a, there's just a whole state law process. Like, there's no reason to change any of those policies. any of those policies, right? There's absolutely no reason to change it, unless the state changes the law, which if that's what they want to do, that'd be fine. But, so some of those need to be, what, what I would say is, let me highlight the few for you that I really feel like, yeah, we should have a discussion on those. Now, there's a whole second set of policies that now Dr. James talked about, that's, the School Board Association has said, hey, if you adopted the new Title IX policies, here are the old policies that you should re-adopt because of the change in the, you know, the Biden Title IX rules went out. But then they just made some other clarifying changes as well, I think, just to help the process. It has nothing to do with 2020 regs or 2024 regs. You know, the original Trump administration regulations or the Biden administration regulations, they're just trying to, I think, improve the process as they go. And so there's a whole host of policies like that, too, and we're getting ready to send out our thoughts on what they did. But, so there's really kind of two, two concepts here. One is the, all the ones that came, the, all the new policies, old policies under Title IX. And then the second, what the School Board Association did for you all, just to say, hey, here is where the words such as diversity, equity, inclusion are included in your policy manual, do with it what you will. I think that was the School Board Association just saying, we just want to make you aware of this. And you might want to have some discussion.
So from my...
So to make it easy, I can just have Dean flag for us, here's the policy that as a board, you just need to go ahead and approve at the next meeting. There's nothing out of the way with these policies based on what the will of the board, he and I perceive already. And then here's some that I think you need to, we need to have some discussion on, at least, because we don't kick them down. There's another hundred policies coming behind them.
Yeah.
So we could end up with five or six hundred policies between now and the next three months.
Yeah. From my perspective, we batch them in terms of most urgent, ones that really need to be changed, and then the ones that maybe, maybe not, have those in another batch. And these will have to go first through first and second readings, correct?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, Dr. James, did you state that something was previously sent out to us in some sort of a list or something?
Did you not get a list of the policies in your, we had them initially in the board agenda that was going out tonight, but they were...
For today's meeting?
Right, so...
Then that agenda got changed.
Right. So there were a bunch of them there. Looking at the time tonight, we pulled those off the agenda.
Right.
I thought what you're referring, I thought the School Board Association sent everything out to every school board member. Did they not?
I don't think we...
No, these are ones that internal staff has worked on, based on guidance. So I'll just make sure that we connect with the attorney and give you a list of what we feel like is based on the old regs and that we need to keep, we don't need to worry about.
Yeah.
Again, like Dean said, there's some things that come on the new regs. We don't need to worry about those.
Yeah, well, I think, I think my, my own lesson learned is when Ms. Carrier sends out the agenda, I don't jump right on it, knowing there's going to be four more changes afterward, so I kind of hold off. And, no, I didn't see all those policies, but if some other list from the Board Association was sent out, I don't think we've got that. At least I don't recall that at all.
We'll make, I'll make sure that all of you get that, and I'll work with Mr. Carrier to do that. And, and you'll get the version that, we added a column onto the School Board Association's recommend, or not recommendations, but just kind of, they provided this in a chart, and we added a column with our own thoughts on this. And so I'll get that, a new version of that to Ms. Carrier, and get that all sent out to you all in the Friday update. And then, then the regular, the, the new spring update or summer update on the Title IX stuff, we'll, we'll get, we'll get that out to you all on the next agenda, too, I would have seen.
And with the summer tending, tending to have fewer things on the agenda, now's the time to get this done.
Yeah, so these are gonna, these are gonna take the entire agenda. I mean, there's that many policies.
Yeah. All right. So anything else? I hate to ask, but...
Don't ask.
Then, okay, so there's nothing else? And so I'll now ask for a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
There's been a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? We have a second by Mr. Hope, motion to adjourn by Ms. Haynes. All in favor of, of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Seven zero. We are adjourned.